Good evening, everyone. We're ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. We are live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Would everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Chair Moody?
Here.
Vice Chair Slottman?
Present.
Commissioner Quinn?
Here.
Commissioner Flengus?
Here.
Commissioner Crowbridge?
Here.
Commissioner Creer?
Here.
Commissioner Cherry?
Here.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal review process, if appropriate. Please read these carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to these rules so that we can have a smooth meeting tonight, and I thank you in advance for that. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the Agenda for Action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. All comments made under this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak on this portion of the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to Item 5. This is for possible action to obey the final minutes for the Planning Commission meeting of July 14, 2015. Is there a motion for that abeyance?
To approve the final minutes?
No, they've asked us to obey. Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to hold the July 14, 2015 minutes to the September 8, 2015 hearing.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. The motion is to obey the minutes to the next Planning Commission meeting. That motion carries, and the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of July 14, 2015 are obeyed to our next meeting. Moving on to Item 6, for possible action, any items from the Planning Commission staff under the applicant wish to be stricter or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Let's move on to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Mr. Chairman, staff notes the following abeyance requests. Item 7, TMP 59942, abeyance is requested until September 8. Items 21, 22, and 23, GPA 59270, ZON 59271, and SDR 59272, applicant requests abeyance until October 13. Items 26, 27, and 28, VAR 59491, SUP 59492, and SDR 59494, applicant requests abeyance until September 8. Items 29, 30, and 31, VAR 59497, VAR 59598, and SDR 59499, applicant is requesting that these items be withdrawn without prejudice. Item 32, VAR 59525, applicant's requesting abeyance until October 13. Item 48, MSP 59949, applicant requests abeyance until September 8. And the last item, Item 49, TXT 59551, applicant requests abeyance until September 8.
Okay, thank you very much. Do any members of the public wish to be heard just on the housekeeping items that we've mentioned? Hearing none, Commissioner Slottman, your motion on the house... Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Will you approach the microphone?
Good evening, Chairman and Planning Commission members. My name is Mario Garcia, 824 Trotter Circle. I was here at the July 14 meeting, some of you may remember that. Just wanted to briefly state...
Which item are you here to speak on?
I'm sorry, 21, 22, and 23.
Okay.
Okay. Just very quickly, I know at that meeting, I believe, there might have been a misunderstanding, miscommunication, that a lot of people were in support of that workaround, and I'm here to tell you that I have a letter, which I hope you have by now, with 28 signatures of individuals who oppose strongly any workaround as a solution to this. We think the matter should be voted on, on its merits, as it stands, as it was submitted for a general plan amendment and a rezoning to C1. We do not favor any type of modification, or, quote again, "workaround," the words that were used at that meeting, for this issue. So, I don't know if you have the letter. It's dated August 6. There were seven pages, and there were...
You're welcome to submit that and make it a part of the record tonight, if you'd like.
All right.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
I think that's it. I think that will convey the feelings that the majority of the residents who have responded to these issues, to these items, rather, and indicate the strong opposition to this. And we don't really understand why it's another two months. I don't know legally if council can address that and tell us whether or not that is, I guess, legal to do, to push it off another two months, when it's been held once before. We just don't know where the applicant should withdraw their application and resubmit, if this is the time that they are doing the research and studying how they can either reshape their business, their business proposal, to fit the existing zoning, or whether we're going to see a proposed modification to the city's Unified Development Code.
Let's go back to your question about whether it's legal or not, and I'll defer to our city attorney to answer that.
I'll answer that question. Yes, it is appropriate to obey the item, and I guess it would help the gentleman if planning could tell them why the new abeyance for that particular items.
We hear from staff on that?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. The item will come back before the Planning Commission. We'll still need a request for a rezone. The item will stay intact as it is. It will be considered under a new text amendment that's working its way through, that won't change the need for the entitlements they're asking for. The text amendment that's being proposed, that should be working its way through council, would simply add convalescent care as an allowable use in office, similar to hospice. And if that's considered, then this site would potentially be eligible for a rezone to office and a convalescent care, as hospice is already allowed there, would also be allowed. And that could be considered at that time.
Okay. Can I ask just another quick question on, is that a process that is open and notice to residents of the neighborhoods, or is that just something that we need to keep an eye on the city council agenda to try and spot?
The text amendment, you'll have to keep an eye on the agenda for city council, because that is a move that will be introduced at council as an ordinance, and that will have three readings, hearings at city council, not hearings, but readings, and a hearing at recommending committee. So, there will be an opportunity for public input on that. If approved, then these items come back, they'll come back just as they are, those items for that particular site, and then would be considered at that time.
I would ask respectfully if this body could authorize notice be sent out, much as it was, you know, when this application was submitted, so that the individuals that have spent a lot of time on this issue, on both sides of it, are noticed and at least aware of when this will be on the city council.
Well, this item, the request is to obey until October 18, so we'll know when it comes back, if you're talking about the text amendment.
Yeah, I'm talking about the text amendment, sir. Because isn't that something that could be started?
Yeah, text amendments aren't, Mr. Chairman, text amendments aren't generally notice to one particular area, since they affect the entire city jurisdiction. So, you wouldn't individually get notice on that. They're normally published in the paper, so, because they affect citywide, so you wouldn't get individual notice on that.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Thank you very much.
May I ask one quick question? Bob Apple, 1405 Strong Drive, Las Vegas. Will this mean, then, that perhaps the request for a C1 rezoning would be withdrawn, and office would take the place of that?
That's one possibility. The other possibility is it's within the, the council and the Planning Commission can entertain a different zone category that's sort of lesser than a C1. So, for example, with that application for C1, the Planning Commission could act on that and approve a rezone to office, for example, something like that.
With all due respect to Mario, there are a number of us who, that was our focus, was to avoid the C1 designation. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Apple. Okay. Mr. Vice Chair Slottman, your motion on the housekeeping items, please.
Mr. Chairman, my quick question. Is, was Agenda Item Number 7...
That's part of, that's part of the housekeeping items that we're about to vote on.
So, 7 is, 7 and...
7, 21 through 23, 26 through 28, 29 through 31, 32, 48, and 49.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through you, I have a contractual obligation with Item Number 7, so I'll be abstaining when that comes back before us.
Okay. And will you be abstaining on the vote to obey that?
Mr. Chairman, since it's not a substantive motion on the abeyance, I've told the commissioner he's able to vote on the abeyance, but when it comes back, he'll have to abstain.
Very good. Thank you. Now, let's vote, or, let's hear your motion.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to hold Items 7, 26, 27, 28, 48, and 49 until the September 8, 2015 commission hearing, and Items 21, 22, 23, and 32 to the October 13, 2015 Planning Commission hearing, and to withdraw without prejudice, Items 29, 30, and 31.
Okay, very good. That motion carries. Okay, moving on to consent items. Consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be enacted by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commission member or applicant so desires. We only have Items 8, 9, and 10 on the consent agenda. Since they don't need to be read into the record, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve Items 8, 9, and 10 on the consent agenda.
Motion carries. Items 8, 9, and 10 are approved.
Mr. Chairman, those items are final action unless appealed to the clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to the one-motion-one-vote portion of the agenda, the following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff, should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Beginning with Item 11, VAR 59875, the applicant owner is the Garive Family Trust, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a proposed single-family dwelling 20 feet from the front property line, where 30 feet is the minimum setback required, and 18 feet from the rear property line, where 35 feet is the minimum setback required, at 9455 West Centennial Parkway in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Related Items 12 and 13. 12 is SUP 59935, the applicant owner is Rainbow Dreams Educational Foundation, for possible action on a request for a special-use permit for a private school, primary use at 950 West Lake Mead Boulevard in Ward 5. Staff recommends approval. Item 13, SDR 59936, for possible action on a request for a major amendment to a previously approved site development plan review, SDR 3132, to redesign the parking lot and add a playground to an existing private school, primary, with waivers to allow an eight-foot-wide landscape buffer along the south property line, where 15 feet is required, a 10-foot-wide landscape buffer along the north property line, where 15 feet is required, and a five-foot-wide landscape buffer along the west property line, where eight feet is required, in Ward 5. Staff recommends approval. Item 14, SUP 59941, the applicant is Lee Pha, the owner is DK Jewel LLC, for possible action on a request for a special-use permit for a 2,557-square-foot Tavern Limited establishment use, with 240 square feet of outdoor seating area at 353 East Bonneville Avenue, Suite 115 in Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. Item 15, SDR 59931, the applicant owner is Sahara Rancho Office Center, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for two proposed commercial buildings, totaling 18,611 square feet at the northeast corner of Rancho Drive and Sahara Avenue in Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Item 16, the final item on the one-motion-one-vote portion of the agenda, is SDR 59940, the applicant owner is Sunrise Mountain Hospital, for possible action on a request for a major amendment to a previously approved plot plan review, Z-0068-85 (15), for a proposed 80,251-square-foot medical office college at the southeast corner of Teneo Way and Cheyenne Avenue in Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Any staff report on these?
Mr. Chairman, concerning Item Number 15, staff would like to amend Condition Number 12, if approved, as submitted to the clerk, to read, "Prior to the certificate of occupancy, vacate the unused portions of the public sewer easement granted by Document Number 20040526:02146, and constructed with City of Las Vegas drawing number 107-V3399." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on any of the items that were just read into the record on the one-motion-one-vote portion of the agenda? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open this for any discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner? Going back to Item 15, Peter, did you say that the applicant has agreed to that condition?
Yes, we have correspondence saying they agree to that condition.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any discussion on any of these items? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on the one-motion-one-vote items, I move to approve Items 11 through 16, with Item Number 15, Condition Number 12 as amended.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion is made. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, Items 11, 12, 13, and 16 are final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days. Items 14 and 15 will be heard at the city council meeting on September 16, 2015.
Okay, thank you. We are now to the public hearing items on the agenda, beginning with Item 17, DIR 60107. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas, and this is for discussion and possible action on a presentation of the Las Vegas 2020 Master Plan Annual Report. Staff has no recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Fred Solis, Department of Planning. Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
The item before you is a required review. It's required by NRS Section 278. The Planning Commission is required to review the progress of the master plan annually. The current implementation of the 2020 Master Plan Policy Document is approximately 100% complete. Of the 189 goals, objectives, and policies, 45 are complete, 0 are not complete, and 144 are ongoing. The 2020 Master Plan Policy Document was approved on September 6, 2000. The intent of the plan was to guide policy through 2020. The Department of Planning is in preliminary planning stages to create a new policy document for the next 20 to 25 years. The master plan element progress, the implementation of the 2020 master plan elements is approximately 95% complete. Of the 364 goals, objectives, and policies, 59 are complete, 14 are not complete, and 291 are ongoing. An update to the land use between community design elements is expected sometime this fiscal year. As for walkable community plans, we have four. We have four existing plans, the Meadows, West Las Vegas, and Rafael Rivera. Can you go back, please? The implementation of the plans are currently 3% complete. Of the 195 recommendations, five are complete, 133 are not complete, and 57 are ongoing. We currently have a capital improvement project in design. It's a sizable infra project that will replace uneven, cracked, or unsafe sidewalks, and add ADA-compliant sidewalks and ramps within the identified gap areas. Within the Meadows Walkable Community Plan, we also have a CIP in progress. It's in design. They're proposing to add a new five-foot sidewalk along the south side of Meadows between Value View and the YMCA building, a new mid-block crossing across Meadows Lane, new ballbots with pedestrian crossings around the Essex Circle Park, and new neighborhood entry features at Fair Center Drive. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll open this for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Do any of the commissioners wish to be heard?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Question for Mr. Solis. The walkable community plans, how do you all determine where the walkable community plans will be planned next, and like if we're to adopt one on East Las Vegas, I mean, what takes, what's it take to get something like that going?
Staff looks into the applicability, we have a walkable community, what area will be most improved by the plan? We've been using that process, and I think we'll use it going forward as well.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion to accept staff's report on this?
I make a motion to accept staff's report on the master plan.
Okay, the motion is made to accept that report. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Item 18. This is an abeyance, SUP 59427. The applicant is Covenant of Love Corporation, and the owner is Jatine Pandit. For possible action on a request for a special-use permit for a proposed 1,443-square-foot church house of worship use at 316 Vegas Drive in Ward 5, staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, as the minimum requirements for a special-use permit for a church are met, and the proposed use can be conducted harmoniously and compatible with the surrounding churches and residential uses, staff recommends approval with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now open this for public comment. Do any of you wish to be heard, either for or against Item 18? Yeah, where is the applicant? Is the applicant here? Will you come on up, please? Good evening.
Commissioners.
We're well. Will you please tell us your name and address?
My name is Charlene Bynum. My physical business address is 1100 North Martin Luther King Boulevard, Suite C, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89106.
Do you have anything to add to anything that's been said so far?
Well, no. I did speak with the planning, I went over to the business planning office, and I submitted a new set of plans for to add additional parking.
Very good. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
I'll open this for public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, and we can discuss this as a commission.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner?
Thank you. I have spoken to the applicant and have driven by the property, and we have a, in Ward 5, we've had a history of homes being converted into churches and zoning issues that are not in compliance. And in my opinion, unfortunately, this does not fit the need for a church. It is a home, it is a residential area, and unfortunately, I couldn't support this.
Okay, thank you. Do any other commissioners wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Creer, would you like to make that motion, or Mr. Crowbridge?
No, I was going to make a comment, though. This particular area of our fine city is saturated with these small little churches, and if this meets the requirements, I think we need to take a look at our requirements. You know, if you could have a fully operational church in a pastor's residence in 1,400 square feet, I am surprised, you know, it's a pretty creative use of space. I think we need to look at the requirements for the church and saturations. If this were opposite into the spectrum, if this was a liquor store, we wouldn't allow that level of saturation. And I don't see why we just allow nonprofits and which become non-taxpayers saturated in a particular area, which creates to the lack of revenue to make the needed improvements in that area. And so, we're kind of working against the goal, you know? God bless the people and their efforts, but I still tend to agree with my colleague that it's a saturation, and the rules need to be addressed.
Thank you very much. Let me just follow up on that comment. I understand the saturation argument. The size of the location does not trouble me. Every church starts with a small amount of people, and will grow from there and expand into another location, so that's all I have to say about that. Commissioner Slottman?
You know, I went back and forth on this one, and the worship room is 160 square feet, 10 by 16, so, I mean, it's fairly small. One of the things we have to look at is the impacts that it creates when, if you create a whole bunch of pocket churches on, you know, separate, you know, the distance separation from a whole bunch of other protected uses, and if we start approving 1,400-square-foot churches on every corner, then it could start to impact other protected uses. Not saying that the other protected uses should have any greater impact or override a house of worship, but I'm just kind of concerned about, you know, a house of worship that's so small with a worship room that's only 160 square feet.
Right of response, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And I can respect my colleague's concern. My concern also is that if it's Sunday service, then there's parking issues, there is next thing, oh, there's Wednesday Bible study, and then there's saturation issues, parking issues, and then it turns into, and then as it grows, if it does, I would assume it might grow, by the time it does grow, then it's already approved for a full-fledged church, not based off of the size it could be, based off the size it is, and next thing you know, you literally have a full-fledged church. Now, you might say, we'll grow out of that space and move on, but there's no guarantee that that would happen as well. And I just think that there are places for churches, and there are places for residents, and this falls in that category, in my opinion.
Okay, looks like we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to deny the abeyance for SUP 59427.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. The motion is made for denial, so a yes vote is for denial. Please vote. That motion carries. Item 18 is denied.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's Office within 10 days.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to related items 19 and 20. Item 19 is an abeyance, GPA 59210. The applicant owner is Haven One LLC. For possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from RNP, Rural Neighborhood Preservation, to M, Medium Density Residential, at 3316 Valley Lane in Ward 5, staff recommends approval. Item 20, abeyance ZON 59212, for possible action on a request for a rezoning from RE, Residence Estates, to R3, Medium Density Residential in Ward 5, staff recommends approval. Can we please have staff report?
Mr. Chairman, the intensity allowed under the proposed medium density residential land use designation is compatible with the adjacent medium density residential on the east and the high density residential land use designations on the west. Given the need for additional housing, the overall development pattern in this area, and the compatibility with the adjacent multifamily developments, staff recommends approval of both application requests. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you please hear from the applicant? Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
Ernest Patton. My address is 1320 Sharon Road, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Good evening. Do you have anything to say about the application?
Oh, nope.
Okay. I'll open this for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard on either of these items? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, and we can discuss this as a commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Creer.
Thank you, sir. I have met with applicant, and I am in compliance with him. I think it would be a nice addition to our ward, and I am in full support.
Very good. Anyone else wish to be heard? We'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Creer?
Thank you. I make a motion to approve agenda item 19, GPA 59210.
Motion is to approve item 19. Please vote. Motion carries. Item 20?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve item, agenda item number 20, ZON 59212.
Thank you. The motion is to approve item 20. Please vote. Motion also carries.
Mr. Chairman, those items will be heard at the September 16 City Council meeting.
Thank you. Moving on to related items 24 and 25. Item 24 is an abeyance, VAR 59486. The applicant owner is 1701 East Oaky LLC. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow zero parking spaces where 27 spaces are required for a public school primary use at 1701 East Oaky Boulevard in Ward 3, staff recommends approval. Related item 25, abeyance SUP 59487, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a public school primary use in Ward 3, staff recommends approval. Will you please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, the building on this site was previously utilized as a church with parking provided within paved areas in the adjacent power line corridor. Staff has received a letter from NV Energy indicating their willingness to develop a parking agreement with the applicant and allow the parking to continue for the foreseeable future. Staff finds that the site's location next to a power line corridor is a hardship imposed by the site's physical characteristics, and recommends approval of the variance and the special use permit. Staff notes that additional letters of protest were received after preparation of the agenda package.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening. Can we hear from the applicant?
Yes, Lauren Kramer, 1701 East Oaky.
Good evening.
Gary Carlson Architect, 6440 Bristol Way, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89107.
Great. I know we heard from you last month. Maybe you could update us on what has transpired since the last meeting?
Yep. We had conducted a neighborhood meeting. It was fairly well-attended. You've seen notes in your comments from staff that who...
Can I ask you to move a little closer to the mic so that everyone can hear you? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Staff attended this meeting, and I think Commissioner Schlotman attended, and we had even a county commissioner that was at attendance. The notes that you have before you said that there was a majority of those who were in favor of the project. There was about 30 people that attended. I think there's probably more than that, but there's a greatly more number in the neighborhood that have children that may not have attended. So, we accept staff's recommendation for approval. If there's, the way the variance is written is confusing to members of the public, as well as maybe Commissioners. The adjacent property that has been used for 50, 60 years to park on is a Nevada Energy right-of-way, and the owner is working with them to continue this parking arrangement. The, who also attended the neighborhood meeting was the Regional Transportation Commission, who has a plan to run a trail and beautify the right-of-way through the neighborhood. And we see no problem with being able to accommodate parking, as well as access, pickup, and drop-off for this proposed use, and a pathway and green space for the RTC proposed use.
Who's also here tonight?
Yeah, I think they might be in attendance at the meeting here.
You want to ask them any questions?
So, we'd be glad to answer any questions the Commissioners have.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm going to open this for public comment. I'm going to give you a chance to reply after we've heard from everyone. Can I get an idea of how many people are here to speak on these items? Maybe, okay, come on up, please. We've got two mics. Gentlemen, if you could step back to free up the microphones. Good evening. Your name and address, please.
William Levitt, 1701 Griffith Avenue, Las Vegas, 89104.
Are you here for or against these items?
Initially, I was strongly opposed to it. I have met with Mr. Kramer and both Mr. Kramer brothers numerous times, and with Mr. Schlotman, we've had numerous conversations. My concern, and I want to publicly say is not at all with Mr. Kramer or, you know, him personally, my concern is specifically the way that the property and the issues, and I think we've come to, you know, to understand that once this is approved as a school, there's no oversight whatsoever as to the number of students. Mr. Schlotman and I both met, and we've discussed this, and I think this is the primary concern as far as the existing infrastructure and the capacity to support this. I'm all in favor of Mr. Kramer because he is, he is trying to do the right thing. My concern is with the property overall. If Mr. Kramer sells, and then we have a non-responsive property owner, and we get ourselves into an issue, you know, as has been previous problems, as was indicated in the last meeting.
Still not sure I know whether you're for or against it.
Well, with reservations, I guess, would be the same. And we, I think Mr. Kramer would say, he sees, you know, the concerns that I have.
I see every concern that you have is a valid concern.
But, hang on, I'm going to give you a chance to reply in just a few minutes.
So, our concern is not only the parking, the travel, but then the overall use of the building with no limitations as to the number of students, et cetera. I think Mr. Kramer and I, Mr. Kramer spoke today with the school district, and we were both rather shocked to find out if it's used as a charter school, there's no inspection done by Clark County School District on this facility. The only limiting factor comes under the fire codes and the subsequent inspections. The staff was at the neighborhood meeting, and I'd spoken to the staff member before, and frankly, I was appalled in the status of where the city codes stand, that there is not a limitation on occupancy use once something is approved as a school.
Thank you, Mr. Lott.
That summarizes my position.
Thank you. Good evening.
Jason Scott, address 8909 Goldstone Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89143. I'm the heir to 1701 Griffith Avenue. We're opposed to this measure, mainly for the same reasons that have been stated here. Main concern is, you know, the traffic, and that it's going to be a daily thing. Other charter schools and residential areas have had serious problems, Somerset in northwest Las Vegas, and other things with the residential around them, and it's been an ongoing problem where these buildings were not constructed to be large-scale schools. You know, it becomes a problem with the daily routine, where it's a Sunday, this was a Sunday meeting house, you know, and this is going to now become a traffic problem during the work week, and those times when we're trying to get to and from work. So, we're opposed to this measure.
Thanks, Mr. Scott. Good evening, sir.
Evening. Jeremy Storm, 1721 East Oaky Boulevard. I'm here as a vice president of the Crestwood Neighborhood Association. I can say from the meeting, as well as Facebook and Nextdoor Conversations in our community, it's in support of a school going into this location. I mean, what reservations there are about the parking, of course. I did notice in the submitted documents, there was a plan that would involve parking assistance of some sort to help guide people through the neighborhood, and that would be great if that was a part of what ultimately happened here to alleviate some of those parking concerns, but generally speaking, the community is in support of having a school here at this location.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I'll, doesn't look like there's anyone else who wishes to speak, so I'm going to give the applicant a chance to...
I think there's one more person.
Oh. If anyone else wishes to be heard, we'd ask you to come up and line up behind the microphone. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Nancy McDonald, and I live at 2004 Peyton Drive, 89104. And I've been with the church and the day school on this property for 40 years. We did have, I noticed a lot of people are saying there was only traffic there on Sundays. We had a full-blown preschool and kindergarten Monday through Friday. So, there hasn't been, until this past year, there hasn't been a time when there was not a preschool there. And we did have originally up to 300 children, not all at the same time, but registered, so we had a flow. The last few years, it's gotten smaller, and we got down to about 75. But we did always, the fact of saying that there can be as many children as we want to put in the building, well, when the city had it, of course, we couldn't. They came, they measured the rooms, they said, this capacity for this room is this many. Now, it's, then it was under the state, and then it would be under the school district. But the fire department has to come in also, and there are different entities. There's no way you could put in these classrooms. It doesn't make sense. And we, did you want to mention about today?
Oh, well, we had...
We'll give him a chance during his report.
Oh, okay. We, there is, there is an opportunity that has come up that we've really been hoping for, and there is a grant that has come through for, between United Way and the city, and hopefully, the charter school across the street, where they're going to allow charter schools to have preschools. And what they're looking at is just pre, the four-year-old classes. So, they're looking at having maybe two classrooms of four-year-olds. So, it's not that it's going to be inundated with primary elementary school children. It's going to be preschool. So, and that's really what the building, what the rooms are suited for. So, that's my feeling. I definitely, of course, am for approval.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Okay. Reply from the applicant.
Just to note, parking has been an issue in the neighborhood with the school across the street for 10 years. The parking that's available on this site, it's mentioned in your staff notes that 27 spaces are required, 70 are available. If, in fact, this property is used by the school across the street for some of their classrooms, what that does is take some of the parking load that is now on 17th and Oaky and transfers that to the parking area on the other side of this building, somewhat mitigating some concerns. So, we think the number of classrooms are nine. They'll accommodate either a preschool or an elementary situation. It's our understanding, staff mentioned at the neighborhood meeting, that if there was an expansion of any sort, a new use permit would have to become and brought before the Planning Commission.
Okay. Very good. I will close the public comment and open this for discussion on the Planning Commission. Commissioner Quinn?
Good evening. Mr. Kramer, can you tell me another school that you have owned and operated, and the success rate, and how that worked out for you?
No, I cannot, because I've never been an operator of a school. We're just landlords, and we're here on behalf of the building and trying to get the building able to be used by the people that are, the school across the street. So, we're not an operator. We have no...
So, who's going to operate the school?
Well, we're hoping it's United Way with, through, with Connie, IACSN. They've been a charter school for 10 years, and they're literally directly across the street.
Okay. So, my question then is this, as of today, right now, as you stand in front of us, you're the landlord, and we have nobody to operate the school. Is that fair to say?
There's no school to operate. There's, it's an empty building that we've been, we've been putting sprinklers in and doing remediation, and we don't have a commitment from anybody for anything right now. And even if we did have a commitment, we couldn't do anything because we're going through this process.
Okay. My next question is, how many kids will be in a classroom? 19, 24, 35? How many?
The sizes of the classrooms vary some, so, in the neighborhood of 15 to 30.
15 to 30 children in eighth grades, approximately, let's go with 25, so you're looking...
Right. I mean, it varies. The rooms are different sizes, so...
Right. Just for the record, my children did go to school there when this lady taught preschool. My son, Paul Quinn, I'm sure you remember him, because he was quite a handful. And, I mean, let's face it, he turned out fine, but it was rough going when he was at Griffith Methodist Preschool. The other thing I want to say, I live near Howard Wozden School, and Howard Wozden abuts Shetland and Pinto, and it's a very easy thing when I drive through the neighborhood at 2:30 or 3:00, and I know there's neighbors here tonight, but they don't seem to have any problems when they park the cars. They get out nicely, and they walk to the school, and they bring their children, and it lasts about 20 minutes, and it's over. But you have to remember that these are rural neighborhoods that I live in, and the parking is much different because there's, you don't have to park, you know, side, you know, like vertically, like, you know, parallel park. You just drive in, drive in, and it works out beautifully for our neighborhood. I mean, I'm sure people have a few complaints, but not many. The third thing, the fourth thing I want to say, and then I'll stop, is I do believe in this socio-economic time in our lives, not everybody's going to be driving their children to school. I will, I will say you'll see a lot of people pushing their kids in buggies and dropping off the little ones, and there'll be a lot of that going on. And I do believe that. I grew up in that neighborhood. I love that neighborhood, and I would love to see this work. I'm just a little troubled that we don't know who's going to operate it, and we don't know who's going to run it. And to be honest with you, I think that's a very important question, so I'm going to sit on it, and I'm on the fence, just so you know. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Trowbridge?
Thank you, Chairman. It seems that one of the primary concerns with this particular project is the parking. And so I look at the material you submitted on...
And so, I look at the material you submitted on page three. Boldly faced, it says, "The parking lot behind 1701 East Oaky accompanying a request is a letter of perpetuity from Nevada Power for use of existing parking lot," on and on and on. The next paragraph down, it says, "Nevada Power is currently working on a letter of perpetuity for its use." Do we have it or not have it?
Okay, so-
I, I need you to speak in front of a microphone, please.
So, so about 60 years ago, when the building was constructed, there was a handshake done for the use and the property's been used as a parking lot for the past 60 years. We have not got anything, what happened was, NV Energy has changed ownership and they don't like to give out perpetuity letters. They said they'd rather sell us the property. And so, we just spent about $2,600 for a appraisal and it just came in, they, they got it, and they haven't even reviewed the appraisal because there is some, there's some interest from the RTC to come back behind the parcel and they need an easement for their path. So, I think maybe county maybe, maybe had got involved when they found out about it and they're, they're boycotting the deal between NV Energy and us right now until, Michael and I, we've been playing nice from the beginning. We, we want, we want the trail to go back there just so we can work out a possible easement with them if they decide to come in. So, that's where we're at with NV Energy right now. They, we, we put ballards on all of the polls too, so-
I, I think that answers the question about whether there was a letter or not.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schlotman.
Yes, Mr. Erp, Mr. Chairman. So, I met with Bill at the public hearing and I also met with Mr. Kramer at the public hearing and spoke to quite a few different people and, you know, when this first come before me a couple of months ago, I start reading and it said, "Zero parking spaces where 27 are required." And I thought that it was just the craziest thing I've ever heard. Then I start reading and, you know, I'd seen the, the parking that they have, you know, just to the east of that parking lot and so then it made more sense. So, you know, as far as the variance goes, the variance isn't my big, biggest concern because there's a condition of approval. This condition number one, under SUP 59487, that says, "A special use permit will be revoked upon termination of agreement to allow parking on the parcel to the east of the site unless above the parking arrangements are made." So, that's not my big concern. The bigger concern would be the special use permit and there's a lot of things to consider there. And at the beginning, I didn't really feel that I had that big of an issue with it and, you know, and I'm still on the fence just a bit because, you know, I, I've heard from a lot of, a lot of neighbors about a lot of concerns and, you know, it's, it's not necessarily about, is, is the school good or is it serving a better education than additionally some other school? Is it right for that neighborhood? Purely a plan and per, you know, based on, based on plan. And so, what we're looking at is, will it, will it have an effect on traffic in the neighborhood? Number two, will it have an effect on kids hanging out in front of people's houses after they get out of school?
Four-years-old.
Let me, let me continue on then I might ask a few questions. So, these are all some of the concerns that I, I heard. So, how much additional traffic? If, if we're adding additional 300 students? And then I heard, well, we might only be adding another 100 students. Then I heard, well, we're only going to add 45 students during, or 75 students during the first year and it's only going to be a daycare during the first year. So, however, at the end of the day, it doesn't matter, you know, because at the end, end of the day, when we approve this without any limitation on the number of students, you're allowed 300 additional students, more or less. I think the architect or in the backup data, I counted up the occupant load that you had and it was somewhere around 240 to 260 additional occupants. So, if you had 240 to 260 occupants and let's say not every one of them, you know, are driven to school, some of them will, will walk to school, you could be adding additional 200, you know, car trips into that neighborhood per day. One of the things that I brought up, I, I kept quiet at the neighborhood meeting as I usually do because I don't want to influence anybody's decisions, you know? I want the public to be able to say what they, they want to say and I want the applicants to think and say what they want, want to say. And I want to have my comments here at the dais. So, a lot of people asked if I was going to support this or deny this and I told them I, I'd never tell them if I'm going to support or deny application before I get to the planning commission hearing because inevitably, I've changed my mind 100 times in the past and, you know, it's just something I'm not going to do. So, I heard, okay, so there was a church previously approved on this site. I heard that there was up to 300 students or, you know, people in daycare, preschool to daycare.
Same as daycare. Same as preschool.
But then here recently, as little as 75.
We, today, we met with the, it was just today.
Yeah. So, let me, let me continue on then we might have a couple of other questions. So, that school has been, or church with the daycare preschool, from my understanding, which city staff can correct me if I'm wrong, has been around since the 60s. And so, however, that's been around since the 60s, but the, the school across the street hasn't been around since the 60s. So, when we have a school across the street that has, you know, 400 students in it and then we're going to add almost double that possibly, which would be allowable by code with an additional 300 students, we're doubling the amount of traffic in that neighborhood. I've also asked a question about crossguards and, you know, traffic and this and that. And I know that you have to submit a traffic plan to Public Works and get that approved. I don't know how that's going to get approved prior to this school year, but that's really none of my concern. During that public meeting, I was pretty surprised. After the meeting was over, Mr. Kramer said, "Everybody in support, please raise your hand." And about 15 hands went up in the air. And then he said, "Everybody not in support, come talk to me and I want to work with you." And I appreciate an applicant doing that. You know, I, I was hoping that we would have had a little bit more resolution between the neighbors and, you know, Mr. Kramer prior to this meeting. And as typical throughout John S. Park and this whole neighborhood, I always get bombarded with the emails within the past, or the hour leading up to the, up to the meeting. One of the things that makes it hard for me to support is that I had two emails sent to me from two people that live in the neighborhood and then I had another letter with 18 signatures in opposition to, to the project that I'd just received probably about 4 o'clock today. And I hadn't been able to see if, if any of these people are the same people that was at the meeting. Not that I'm opposed to the school necessarily, it's just opposed to the effects that it could cause. And I talked to Mr. Kramer at one point and he said that, and I'm about to wrap up my, my comments here, but I think this is kind of important because there's a lot of people from the neighborhood who's reached out to me. More people than has reached out to me on any other project within the past three years. At the end of the day, this will be going to City Council. So, regardless of whatever happens here today, Mr. Kramer previously, previously told me, "Was there a way that we possibly could use this as auditorium or a cafe even if we didn't have the classrooms there? Or could we have this as a rec, a rec center or something like that?" Those are all possibilities. I don't think that, that's something that we could work out at this meeting. I don't think it's something of talking about limiting the students to 100 or 150 or figuring out what that number should be is something that we'd be able to work out in this meeting. If, you know, we, we spoke about having offset, you know, times of when students get picked up and dropped off, I don't think that's something that we could work out at this meeting. So, I think there's a lot of things that possibly you could do to limit the, the concerns of the neighborhood and if you could reduce that impact, I think you might be able to get a little bit more neighborhood support. That's all the comments I have at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Cherry.
Chairman, through you. I, I do have an issue granting a variance based on a, a future agreement that doesn't exist today. And I, I do have a concern jumping in use to a more intense use. If it was a church with an auxiliary use for a preschool, I certainly, I don't think I'd have as much issue, but jumping to the higher use in this neighborhood, I do have an issue with. Thank you.
Commissioner Flengas.
Thank you. I'm not so concerned about the parking issue here because there is a significant history of 50, 60 years of using that parking lot and we do have conditions that you've accepted that if this agreement goes away, your special use permit goes away. So, I'm not too worried about the parking. What I am concerned with really is two times a day, pick up and, you know, drop off and pick up each day and that's the impact on the neighborhood. Other than that, I, this is a good use. I think it's proper. It's been, this has been the use for a long time. So, the question becomes, are you going to be able to run two or, you know, 150, 200 cars without adversely impacting the neighborhood? One of the emails I received was from an individual who lives in the neighborhood. His biggest concern is people are parking in front of his house, using his driveway for, you know, to turn around and go the opposite direction. And so, I can support this if I can get a comfort level that you're going to be able to move that traffic in and out twice a day so it doesn't adversely impact the folks that are living there. And specifically, it's really the morning. I think the afternoon, a lot of people are usually at work or what have you and, and it may not be as, as troubling for the neighborhood. But, as I understand and I've kind of looked at, I've been trying to pick it up from your, from your documents, you enter, your drop-off plan is to push people through the parking lot? Is that correct?
We have an exhibit here on the table that was submitted to the traffic engineer at his suggestion prior to the last meeting. And if you could show it, we-
I'd appreciate if we could see it unless this is the one that's on there.
Okay. So, the parking area is here.
We, we still need to hear you through the microphone.
Shoot, okay. Sorry. The parking area is here to the east side of the church, the NV Energy property. The sample that the traffic engineer sent us, we basically followed. So, point of access is on, off of Oaky and off of Brackett. The amount of space required to drive through the parking lot, turn around, drop off kids or pick up kids and back out again, it's efficient to hold many cars. Prior to this, if the school across the street ends up using this facility, then a good percentage of the parking challenges up here in the neighborhood would be transferred to this side of the building. I don't see, there's no houses on either side of this property.
Well, the question becomes is when folks are trying to get into that parking lot, you're going to have cars lined out on the street. And if this school is consistent with other schools, people get their 10 minutes, 15 minutes before they're due to pick up their kids and they're going to sit in their cars waiting to pick up their kids and most likely, they're going to be on the street. So, what measures are y'all going to take to make sure that you're not, you know, when these folks are parking on the street, that it's not going to impact the neighborhood?
We show on the parking plan that was submitted to the traffic engineer and we have not received any comment back suggesting that he's approved it or approved of it. All the lane within the property can handle many cars in line waiting for their children before they pick them up. So, you've got the, the length of the property, as we're showing it here, coming and going. So, there's a great deal of, of waiting on the property as opposed to on the street.
That's just really my only concern. I live in a neighborhood where there's two schools. I've got a middle school on one side of a park and you've got an elementary school on the other side.
Right.
And they do, you know, the middle school starts and finishes at a different time so they don't impact with each other. But, there's still a lot of cars parked on the street to go pick up their kids afterwards. And I, I really don't have a problem with that personally because it's, it's a price we pay to educate our kids. I just want to make sure you take appropriate measures and concerns to minimize it on, on the neighborhood. I don't like, you know, if there's, you know, the one concern I have is the individual, they're having cars pulling in his driveway all the time to turn around and go the other way. And it's just little things like that. It doesn't sound like much, but if you're living there and that's happened daily, or if you're having somebody come visit you at school quitting time and they can't find a parking place in front of your house, that becomes a problem.
The challenge with the existing school is that they border 17th and that does open up to other parts of the neighborhood and driveways. On this parcel, all the parcels are available for parking and pickup and drop off. So, it's, it's pretty different.
Thank you.
It could, you know, hold a lot. I'd like to make another comment.
Hang on, hang on. We're, public comment's closed now, so I'll ask you to address any specific questions to you and I don't believe one's pending, so I'm going to go to Commissioner Carrer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a point of clarification. So, if we approve this by chance for the special use permit and they, for some reason, do not get the school to come in there, does that special use permit go away and then they have to come back for, you know, alternative use for that?
Steph.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Pursuant to that condition, it is basically putting the applicant on notice that this, the special use permit will go through a revocation process at that point unless they can come up with alternate means to accomplish the, the parking and drop off that's adequate.
They would have a certain timeframe for that. Would we have to put that in a motion? So, if after a year, a school, an agreement is not in place, then the revocation process would begin or?
Through you, Chairman. Yes, you can actually set a required review and which time you can evaluate the situation. If nothing has transpired at that point, you can move forward for show and cause and revocation of the special use permit.
And this board commission would not have, if, once approved, would not have authority over traffic at that point, correct? If we came up for review, would the review for traffic also come up as well as the review for the agreement that's in place? Like, if there's not a sound traffic plan in place and we can see that, it's, how do you handle that?
Public Works.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, through you. We do have condition number eight, which requires them to do a somewhat mini-traffic study to analyze the queue lengths of the classes and how many students they're allowed per bell time. Most likely, they'll be allowed a maximum of three bell times and the number of students per bell time is to be determined based on the future study or mini-plan that they give us for the operations of the school. And of course, it depends on if they're standing alone as a school or if they're joining with the school to the west of 17th. But, as that review comes through on the review of, the required review, yes, all the conditions will be looked at if they have been in compliance with the conditions. And we, we can use that approval study to also impose things that, that they need to do for the school.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anything else, Commissioner Carrer?
Uh, no, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, through you. Another question, could I get Lucian to repeat, there's a maximum of three bell times?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, through you. Typically, on all the charter schools and private schools that we've done in the past, we have only allowed a maximum of three bell times. So, kind of by de facto, there's a, a limitation on number of students. And when we look at their onsite circulation, we look at how many cars can be accommodated onsite and that by default determines the maximum number of students per that, per bell time.
Right. You can use us all? You know, I'm not expert in what you do, but just looking at this site, it, it appears that you would get a maximum of about 40 cars circulating throughout this site. Would you say that that's a relatively close number based on what you're seeing?
I don't, I think it's probably a little generous on it because each, we calculate each car length is about 25 feet, so they would need about 1,000 feet of storage on the property. And just looking at it, if they showed 1,000 feet on the circulation, then they could, using the plan that they- could, using the plan that they submitted, I, it looked like about five hundred feet for their queuing, maybe a little more, maybe six hundred, but I haven't measured to exactly how much queuing length they have.
So you would say no more than forty, could be as low as thirty? And I'm, I'm not trying to quote a number, but just speaking generically, okay, thank you. That, that's just the, I think that gets back to one of the things that the applicant needs to, needs to think about and try working out is if we have maximum three bell times, and even if we're being generous and saying, you know, forty students per bell time, that's the maximum of one hundred and twenty cars that can come through there, you know? So what's going to happen to the remainder of the cars? I mean, they're going to be backing up into the neighborhood. I'm not opposed to the project. I think there's some things that you can possibly take from this meeting, maybe go to, go back to the drawing board, think about some of this, see if you can make any modifications before it gets to City Council. Not saying this one get approved or denied here, something will happen or it'd go forward with no recommendation, but I think if you take a hard look at some of these things before City Council, I think, I think that would help out a tremendous amount.
Commissioner Carr.
Thank you. I have another question. And Oki is single lane in each direction? Does anybody know? I've driven it, I don't know, a thousand times probably, but I don't remember. It looks like it's a single lane in each direction. So if you do have queuing that's going to back up into Oki, you know, you are going to block traffic because you can't go another lane. People are going to end up going another lane to get around that traffic and going into oncoming traffic, which is pretty dangerous. I was thinking that if it was two lanes, you could actually segment one lane during certain times of the day, you know, you put those barriers down the middle for the school, and then have a pass-through lane on the opposite side. I'm not a traffic guy, but I've seen that, seen that at other schools. But since it's only one lane, you couldn't do that. So just an FYI, that it would black up traffic since it's one lane.
People park on the street, so the street's wide enough for parking, for somebody to park on the street here.
Sir, we can't, you need to speak into a microphone.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say one more thing. I think my concern, after listening to all this, has come down to the fact that people are going to be so angry at all the traffic, they're going to park on a street, and they're going to tell their kid, I'm on the corner of Cochran and Oki, and then these poor little children, they're going to go running down the street. And because it's a charter school, they don't have to have crossing guards, they don't have to have any of this stuff. And in my opinion, it's not safe. So I will not be supporting this motion tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Carr, did you have anything else? And was there a question that you asked?
No, I was mostly trying to get clarification and to make a point for my fellow colleagues to understand as well that it is a single, a single lane, and cars that would queue in there would not have an opportunity to go around. So it would cause traffic buildup.
Yeah. All right. So here's what I'm going to do. Although the public comment has been closed, there's been a lot of discussion on this, more so than, than I expected. I'm going to give you two minutes, okay? I'm going to ask the clerk to set the timer, and you can respond to anything that's been said or, or brought up tonight or, or correct anything.
I'd like to respond to the three concerns. If they could put up on the screen the classroom sheet, there's a misconception on the billing occupancy. When we are asked to show occupancy in the building per code, it's as if all the rooms are occupied. So in this school, I don't see anything yet. In this school, there are nine classrooms. And you'll see on our documents, we've tabulated how many students are associated with those in the classrooms. But the occupant load includes filling up every space, whether they're, you know, you can't fill the building with students in classrooms because they are the ones that are using the assembly spaces. So if you look at the occupant load here...
Got to speak into the mic, please.
Oh, excuse me. If you look at the occupant load for classrooms... No, go to the, go back to the plan. The classroom's on the lower floor.
I just want to make sure. You have three items. You've only covered one, and you only have one minute left.
All right. So the occupant load is not four hundred and twenty-three associated with classrooms. That's all the spaces used by anybody. You know, they can't, they can't occupy two rooms at once. So that's a misconception. Number two, the parking situation. If the, if the property's five hundred feet long, we're showing this plan that was sent to the traffic engineer on his request during staff review, there's a thousand feet, you could, you could tabulate a thousand feet of queuing on the parking parcel, all right? And I can't remember the other one. Mrs. Quinn, you had a...
Safety, kids running.
Oh, yes. And so as part of the traffic plan, we were requested to do, to the traffic engineer, we have indicated where traffic persons would be at each driveway, where they turn on the property, where they drop and pick off kids.
Okay. Against my better judgment, I'm going to give you fifteen seconds to finish up.
Okay, just take fifteen seconds. The preschool that would be going in there is a five-hour preschool. Innovation starts at eight, the preschool would start at nine. The preschool gets out at two-thirty, innovations gets out at three-forty-five. So we've got different times there already.
That's actually helpful. Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Quinn.
Just one more question to the architect. Is this a second story? There's a second story on this property?
The second, the main level, which is the upper level, basically houses assembly and multipurpose spaces.
Okay. And is that a handicap accessible route for a person to get to?
Yes.
With what? Elevator, ramp?
Ramps.
And the bathrooms are ready for a handicapped child?
There has to be some adjustment to bathrooms as part of making it ready for a school.
There has to be, or there will be?
They're in the process of doing it now.
So if a kid shows up in a wheelchair, that child can go to your school?
Yes. We have handicap plans we've given the owner to...
Thank you.
Is it time for a vote? Looks like it. Commissioner Swartman, what's your pleasure?
Well, just to recap real briefly, I think, I, I don't have an issue with this, and if you could modify a few of those things. However, I think not understanding how much traffic's actually coming in here, how much is backing up into the neighborhood, the offsetting hours, and I know that I just heard the, the young lady come up here and talk about one starting at a certain hour and letting out in another, but there's no condition that, that that's actually what's going to happen. And it's something that I think could be worked out, something that you could make the neighbors happy on between here and council. But if, if there's no condition, we can't hold you accountable. And if, if somebody else comes in, they're going to say, hey, we didn't agree to this. So that's the whole thing. I encourage you to keep working with the neighbors before City Council and, you know, try to find a plan that works for everybody. I'm not against the school, I'm just, there's not enough conditions and written agreements to allow me the comfort level. And plus, having about twenty-five of the neighbors that live in that neighborhood, who I represent personally, I can't support it in this current state, not saying I don't support your school. So for all the reasons stated here, I would have to make a motion on item number twenty-four, VAR five-nine-four-eight-six, for denial.
Okay. Motion has been made to deny item twenty-four. Keep in mind that a yes vote is for denial. Please vote. Motion carries. Item twenty-four is denied. Moving on to item twenty-five.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item number twenty-five, for all the reasons stated here today, I would make a motion for denial and encouraging the applicant to work with City Council.
Motion is to deny item twenty-five. Again, a yes vote or yea vote is to deny. Motion also carries. Item twenty-five is denied.
Mr. Chairman, items twenty-four and twenty-five will be heard at the City Council on September sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
Thank you. Moving on now to related items thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven. Beginning with thirty-three, ZON six-zero-zero-seven-one. The applicant is Audvent Homes. The owner is Janson Family Trust. For possible action on a request for a rezoning from U undeveloped zone to L low-density residential town center land use designation to TC town center zone at the southeast corner of Whittig Avenue and TP Lane in Ward Six. Staff recommends approval. Item thirty-four, WVR six-zero-zero-seven-two. The applicant is Audvent Homes. The owner is Janson Family Trust and Vista Verdi Holdings LLC. For possible action on a request for a waiver to allow a one-hundred-and-fifty-seven-foot external intersection offset where two-hundred-and-twenty feet is the minimum distance separation required in Ward Six. Staff recommends approval. Item thirty-five, VAC six-zero-zero-seven-three. For possible action on a request for a petition to vacate U.S. government patent easements in Ward Six. Staff recommends approval. Item thirty-six, SDR six-zero-zero-seven-four. For possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed twenty-five lot, single-family residential development with a waiver of the town center streetscape standards along TP Lane, Darrell Lane, and Whittig Avenue in Ward Six. Staff recommends approval. And finally, item thirty-seven, TMP six-zero-zero-seven-five. For possible action on a request for a tentative map for a twenty-five lot, single-family residential subdivision in Ward Six. Staff recommends approval. May we please have staff's report?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed rezoning of the property will bring a portion of the subject's site into the town center special land use plan, which staff supports. Staff is also in support of the requested waivers associated with the site development plan review, as they will allow for an orderly continuation of the existing streetscape improvements along Darrell Lane, Whittig Avenue, and TP Lane. Overall, the proposed development of the parcels will create an appropriate infill project that will complete this section of the town center plan. Therefore, staff recommends approval of all applications. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Tim Moreno with Tanny Engineering, representing the client, Adaven Homes. Address is sixty-thirty South Jones Boulevard. We are in agreement with all of the staff's conditions, and we, we feel that this application is perfect for this infill piece and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you. Sir, do you have anything to add? All right. I'll open this for public comment. Do any members of the public wish to be heard either for or against any of these five items? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Yes, sir. Come on up.
Ralph Humphlett, seventy-forty Basoni Street, just across the street, basically. I guess I just had a question. Is there any speed bump as a part of this plan down TP Lane? Just out of curiosity.
We'll ask Public Works that question.
No, there is not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Because I know there's on Darrell, down, down one side of Darrell. So just living in near the neighborhood just seems like people drive down pretty quick down TP Lane. So I was just curious, that's all.
That's something you'll want to keep in touch with the City Councilman's office regarding this. Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and open this for discussion on the planning Commissioner Flengas? Let me just say, I, I support staff's recommendation for approval on these items. I think the street, streetscape waivers do match what's in the surrounding area already, so you'll see my support on this. Commissioner Flengas, I am ready for a vote if no one...
Mr. Chairman, if seeing no other comments, I'm prepared to make motions beginning with item number thirty-three, which is ZON six-zero-zero-seven-one. I move to approve.
Motion is to approve item thirty-three. Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number thirty-four, WVR six-zero-zero-seven-two. I move to approve.
Motion is to approve item thirty-four. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number thirty-five, which is VAC six-zero-zero-seven-three. Move to approve.
Motion carries. Item thirty-five is approved.
Mr. Chairman, item number thirty-six, which is SDR six-zero-zero-seven-four. Move to approve.
Motion is for approval. Please vote. Motion carries.
And finally, Mr. Chairman, item number thirty-seven, TMP six-zero-zero-seven-five. Move to approve.
Motion is to approve item thirty-seven. Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items thirty-three through thirty-seven will be heard at the City Council meeting on September sixteenth.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to related items thirty-eight and thirty-nine. Thirty-eight is WVR five-nine-nine-two-one. The applicant owner is DR Horton Incorporated. For possible action on a request for a waiver of the town center development standards to allow subdivision perimeter walls with retaining walls to exceed a height of six feet without a minimum five-foot-wide landscaped horizontal offset on the south side of Echelon Point Drive, west of Durango Drive in Ward Six. Staff recommends denial. And related item thirty-nine, VAR five-nine-nine-two-two. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a wall height of sixteen-point-five feet where the maximum height allowed is twelve feet. Also in Ward Six, staff recommends denial. May we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, the intent of limiting single-plane walls to a maximum height of twelve feet is to avoid a visual canyon effect and to reduce the impact on adjacent properties from that canyon-like effect. Stepping the walls with intervening landscaping reduces this canyon effect. The site is not developed, and the applicant could redesign the development to accommodate a maximum wall height of twelve feet and provide a step for the landscaping. The proposed walls are not compatible with the existing surrounding neighborhood and are, and are not consistent with the town center development standards. The applicant is requesting a relief from a hardship that is self-imposed. The staff recommends denial of the requested waiver and variance. Please note, we received additional protest after publication.
Thank you. Ms. Lazovich, good evening.
Good evening. Jennifer Lazovich, nineteen-eighty, Festival Plaza Road, here tonight on behalf of DR Horton. If you can go to the overhead, please. Thank you. This right here indicates where the site is. It is located just east of Durango, adjacent to the two-fifteen. The reason I wanted to point this out is because right immediately to the west of us is an existing condo development project. And as a history to what this site was before I stand before you tonight, this was meant to be a continuation of that condo project. It actually got so far down the road that the prior developers had installed underground utilities and things of that nature, and then the recession happened and everything stopped. Since that time, DR Horton has come in and acquired the site, and as part of their construction of one hundred and twenty-two single-family homes, they've had to tear out all of those underground utilities and improvements that were already put in. But they are kind of left with the site the way it sits. They had to, and I've learned a new engineering term tonight. They're trying to balance the site based on the dirt that is there today, given the history of the site. So this exhibit walks you through where we are asking for the waiver and the variance for the increased wall heights. With respect to, and I'll, I'll take you along here, this is the southern edge first. Right immediately south of our boundary wall is a fourteen-foot-wide rectangular concrete drainage channel. I'll show you a picture of what that looks like. So you can see right, this is our site where the flags are located, and then there's a fourteen-foot-wide drainage channel. And of course, on either side of that, to make sure nobody gets in there, there's an existing chain-link fence. It's right behind this chain-link fence that we're proposing to do one of our requests for taller walls. We won't have a sixteen-and-a-half-foot-tall wall all along this boundary. By the color coding, it just kind of walks you through. Sixteen-and-a-half feet is the maximum height of where we would need it. That would be in the red color. So you can see it in this small little area towards the middle. The green is actually the areas where it would be, I'll say, the shortest, which is a maximum height of twelve... a maximum height of twelve feet. And then in the blue areas, the maximum height would be up to fifteen feet. Now, that kind of takes part of what we're doing on the southern side. And if you can see, the condo project immediately to the west of us, they didn't do any exterior landscaping as well. It's a little difficult, you know, to do it out along here, given that we have that drainage channel and the proximity to the beltway. It's tough for maintenance purposes. Obviously, that's a request and a justification that we put forward as to why we'd like to remove the landscaping along there. The wall itself will look like this. So it will be decorative in nature. It won't be gray. It will be painted in a color that is consistent and compatible with the homes we're building. Now, when you get into the interior of the site, we have three spaces, three areas where we are asking again for those increased wall heights. Thank you. The first is along the entranceway, which comes off of Echelon Point. It is a gated community. Along Kingston Bay Street, you see a little bit of the blue and then the green. We would need it in that area. There would be landscaping along this area right here in front of that wall. So as you drive in, you would look to the side, and you would see a tall wall, but you would see landscaping in front of that. The only two other areas we have it are these two vertical lines in between the rear yards of houses going in either direction. What's important about this is sometimes we get asked questions of who's going to be the one who sees the taller wall. The stars indicate, the asterisks indicate, that's the rear yard with the taller wall. Sometimes we've been asked in the past to provide a disclosure so that the people who purchase the lots where they would see the taller wall would just have extra knowledge that they would be buying a lot with, in some cases, it would be fifteen feet. Again, this lot would be the highest at sixteen-and-a-half, and the green color would be the lowest with a maximum height of twelve feet. So with that discussion or description of it, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and we'd ask for your approval of this, of both of these items.
Okay, thank you very much. I will open this for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, and let me ask you a few questions. Let me make sure that the balancing that you're talking about and the reason for the interior high walls is to reflect the grading differences between the properties.
I'm sorry, was that a question?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. I'm going to have my engineer come up because I don't want to delve into engineering answers.
Eve from Valizon with Slater Hannifin. I'm here on behalf of D.R. Horton, also fifty-seven-forty Arville Street, Suite two-sixteen.
Thank you.
And to answer your question, yes, that is correct. This site originally had spoils, and during, you know, excavation of this site, it created more dirt, and we had to balance the site. So it was basically an earthwork balancing act, is what we had to do in order to, I guess, to get the, not have an export site.
So on the non-asterisk side, what is the wall height going to be?
Six feet.
So it'll be a standard height?
The standard height, yes.
All right, and you are willing to make that disclosure to future buyers?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. You know, I appreciate your comments tonight about this. It's one thing to, you know, to look at the paperwork and say, why would we grant this type of entitlement? But, you know, it makes sense with the drainage channel to the south of the property, and because of the grading, I'll be able to support your application tonight. Any other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, seeing no other comments, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Thank you.
Beginning with item number thirty-eight, which is W V R five-nine-nine-two-one, move to approve.
Motion is to approve item thirty-eight. Please vote.
Just a quick question, I'm sorry. Do we need to add a condition, Mr. Perrigo, as to the disclosure? Do you want us to add that to one of these applications?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think the wall will be constructed prior to the sale of the home. It would normally be done. It's part of the whole process unless you don't plan on building your walls until after you sell the home.
Sometimes people pick lots, so.
Yes, that is correct. The walls would be going in, but sometimes, there is times whenever, you know, somebody could come in and pick a lot before the lot is, the subdivision's complete, and that wall may not be in at that time.
So I think that's a good point, then. Can we craft a condition?
Want me to try? You want, okay. What if we said, applicant to provide a written disclosure to a prospective homebuyer if they are purchasing a lot with a wall height of six, of greater than six feet?
Retaining wall.
A retaining wall, excuse me, I'm sorry. A retaining wall of greater than six feet.
That sounds great. And which item will that be attached to?
It looks like item thirty-eight would be my guess, Mr. Chairman. I withdraw the motion, remake the motion.
And just to let you know, there's really no way to enforce that provision.
Okay, so knowing that we can enforce it, Ms. Lazovich, you can represent that D.R. Horton is agreeable to this condition?
Yes.
And that you will notify future property and homeowners of that wall height?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll now entertain the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A new motion on item number thirty-eight, which is W V R five-nine-nine-two-one, move to approve.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, on related item number thirty-nine, which is V A R five-nine-nine-two-two, move to approve.
Motion also carries.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, items thirty-eight and thirty-nine are final action unless appealed to City Council within ten days.
Okay, we are now to items forty and forty-one, which are related, beginning with item forty, S U P five-nine-eight-six-three. The applicant owner is Monaco Properties LLC for possible action on our request for a special use permit for a proposed four-thousand-eight-hundred-thirty-four-square-foot liquor establishment, tavern use with a one-thousand-one-hundred-eighty-eight square feet of outdoor seating area with a waiver to allow said use within the service commercial district on three-point-five acres where a minimum of fifty acres is required at sixty-four-thirty North Durango Drive in Ward Six. Staff recommends denial. Item forty-one is S U P five-nine-eight-six-six, for possible action on our request for a special use permit for a gaming establishment, restricted license use within a proposed four-thousand-eight-hundred-thirty-four-square-foot tavern with one-thousand-one-hundred-eighty-eight square feet of outdoor seating area with a waiver to allow a one-hundred-eight-foot distance separation from a single-family detached dwelling where three-hundred-and-thirty feet is the minimum distance required in Ward Six. Staff recommends denial. Will we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, staff is unable to support the applications as indicated by the waiver required for the minimum lot size for a tavern use within the town center development area, and the waiver for the minimum separation distance from a single-family dwelling for a gaming establishment restricted use. This demonstrates that the proposed development is not harmonious and compatible with the surrounding area, and staff does recommend denial of both applications. Please note, we received additional protests since publication.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Evening, Chairman Shaw Higgins, on behalf of the applicant, ninety-eight-eleven West Charleston, eight-nine-one-one-seven. Obviously, the staff's report talks, recommends denial for the two reasons we're asked for the waiver. We've got a site here that sits on the south side of two-fifteen at the far southern end of the town center overlay district. My client, Monaco Property, purchased the property during the recession, and it basically was a three-quarters-empty development as it sat there. Over the course of the years, they have fully leased out the center. It is, it is fully, except for the space here. And we believe, because it sits on two major thoroughfares, you've got Durango and Centennial, both over a hundred-foot right-of-ways, that it is an appropriate site for this use. We've got adequate parking at the site. We have, within the three-hundred-and-thirty feet setback, we have three homes that would actually fall within that three-hundred-and-thirty feet, which were there prior. They are still surrounded by other commercial uses, specifically a convenience store sits right out the back wall of these homes as well, which has restricted gaming as well. With regard to the square footage, again, we think this, as a, I'll call it a strip center, is larger than most strip centers and is an appropriate use for this type of a strip center as well. The closest restricted tavern use is across two-fifteen, over a thousand or twelve-hundred feet to the north. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to open this for public comment. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on either of these items? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, and we can discuss this on the commission. And Commissioner Quinn?
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Higgins. Is this proposed bar one-thousand foot from any church?
No, Commissioner Quinn, it is not.
Is this proposed bar one-thousand feet from any school?
No, Commissioner Quinn, it is not.
Is this proposed bar three-hundred feet from any pot dispensary store?
I do not know that answer.
That's a good answer.
I do not know that answer.
Your wife will be happy. The Hook Lounge, what are the hours of the Hook Lounge, Mr. Higgins?
I can ask my clientele.
I'm just curious.
If he knows. Do you happen to know the hours of the Hook Lounge? Four to ten-thirty.
Four to ten-thirty, and your establishment, the proposed bar, will be twenty-four hours?
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. I will support this project. Thank you.
Let me say, based on the location of this and considering the surrounding properties, I also agree that this is a suitable location for a tavern, so you'll see my support on this.
And I'll just echo the chairman's remarks. I agree that this is an appropriate use, and if there's no further comments, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please do.
Mr. Chairman, beginning with item number forty, S U P five-nine-eight-six-three, move to approve.
Motion is to approve item forty. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, related item number forty-one, which is S U P five-nine-eight-six-six, move to approve.
Motion is to approve item forty-one. Motion also carries.
Mr. Chairman, items forty and forty-one are final action unless appealed to City Clerk's offices in ten days.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on to related items forty-two and forty-three. Item forty-two, S U P, oh, did we hear from the director of that? Oh, you did say that was final action, right? Okay. Forty-two is S U P five-nine-nine-three-four. The applicant owner is Strato Rise or Strato Reis South LLC for possible action on our request for a special use permit for a proposed two-hundred-and-forty-five-foot-tall building within the McCarran Airport Overlay District at eighteen-oh-one South Las Vegas Boulevard in Ward Three. Staff recommends approval. Related item forty-three is S D R five-nine-nine-three-three, for possible action on our request for a site development plan review for a proposed twenty-two-story mixed-use development consisting of two-hundred-and-thirty-two condominium units and eight-thousand square feet of retail space in Ward Three. Staff recommends approval. Will we please have staff report?
Mr. Chairman, this site was previously approved for a similar mixed-use project on, in two thousand and six. Since then, those entitlements did expire. The proposed use and design of this proposal will make a positive contribution in the urban design for the residents, the immediate area and of the community at large. Staff recommends approval that requested site plan for the proposed twenty-two-story mixed-use development, and there have been no additional comments received after publication.
Mr. Chairman, before you go on, on items number forty-two and forty-three, I'll be abstaining. My law firm has a relationship with the applicant's representative, so out of an abundance of caution, I will be abstaining on those two items.
Thank you, Commissioner Flengus. Well, note, you are abstaining on these two items. Good evening.
Chairman Commissioners, George Garcia, ten-fifty-five Whitney Ranch Drive, Suite two-ten. Certainly a pleasure to be before you, and on this particular project, a great opportunity to resurrect and bring back something that initially started before the Great Recession. I think it's an indication as we see the condo market beginning to return and bring back and help the renaissance of this particular area. We appreciate and concur with staff's analysis and recommendation and the findings that we meet for the special use permit in both, as well as the S D R. I'd be happy to go into any details and answer any questions and see if there's anybody that has any comments.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll open this for public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that wishes to speak either for or against items forty-two or forty-three? Seeing none, I will close the public comment, and we can discuss this on this board. Commissioner Quinn?
Just briefly, I did meet with you, Mr. Garcia, for the record. We had a meeting at the Coffee Pub. I think the project is terrific, and I think that it speaks volumes that the Rexford neighborhood and the people that, like, you know, in that area are not here to speak against it because they watch anything that comes into their neighborhood very closely. The second thing I discussed with you, which is very important, even though we can't put it as an additional request, I just really want you to make sure, or try to get to the owners and let them know, this is not going to be a Trump Plaza where, if they're not all sold out, we're going to rent them to people that can't get into the Wynn, and they can't get into the Aria, and they're going to be strolling down the street from the stratosphere to rent them hotel, to get them out as a hotel room. It irates me, and it happens. I mean, this is a big property. I hope they all sell out, but I really hope more than anything that it doesn't turn into rentals when people invest a half a million dollars to watch somebody pay sixty-nine dollars to sleep there at night. That's my, but I will support your project.
Thank you.
Vice Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you. When George Garcia first told me about this a few months ago, I said, oh, no, it's in the Beverly Green neighborhood. And then I started hearing from people in the Beverly Green neighborhood, and there wasn't as much opposition as I thought, you know, and I, you know, I asked them if they would support it, and they said they were still on the fence. And I asked them if they thought it would detract from their neighborhood, and they said no. And then I asked them if they felt that it was going to hurt their value, property value, even though that's something that we don't consider, and they said no. And then I asked them, do you have privacy concerns? And they said no. And this was from like five or six different people who reached out to me about this project. And their biggest issue was, well, you know, we're scared of the developer and of his, is he just going to flip this project and make a buck on it? That's something that we don't really take into consideration. We don't like to see that happening. We like to see projects built that we approve, but at the end of the day, we can't, you know, base our judgment on the merits of the project will be built or flipped in the future. So hopefully, hopefully he does build on this project. It is a beautiful project. I attended the neighborhood meeting, and there was a lot of questions about what kind of stores are going in and what kind of, you know, HOA requirements and the C C and Rs. and the price per square foot. And I understand. I kept my mouth shut at that meeting, just like at every other neighborhood meeting, just taking it in. And at the end of the day, finally, a few good questions were asked at the end. Could you stair-step it? And you looked into that, and it would probably detract from this building facade you had. Another one was, you know, I want to go around some of the other high-rises, Newport and Soho lofts, and check to see how the shadows affect me when I'm two, three, four blocks away. And I never did hear back from those individuals. So evidently, I don't think it's that big of a concern, and, you know, I support this project and hope you build it. It was approved years back, and so considering all those things, you'll see my support.
Commissioner Chair?
Mr. Chairman, through you. I live in a high-rise downtown. We haven't had any issues for ten years of any shadows that we've noticed from either Soho or Newport, which Commissioner Slavon just raised or brought up. I'm excited to see that someone is still considering building a high-rise in downtown Las Vegas, so you'll be seeing my support for this application. Thank you.
Looks like we're ready for a vote?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on item number forty-two, S U P five-nine-nine-three-four, and move to approve following staff's conditions.
Motion is to approve item forty-two. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, on item number forty-three, S D R five-nine-nine-three-three, and move to approve following, subject to staff's conditions.
Motion is to approve item forty-three. Motion carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Flengus on both items.
Mr. Chairman, items forty-two and forty-three will be heard at the City Council meeting on September sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner's, thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Ladies and gentlemen, we've been going almost two hours, and I know we have a lot of people here to speak on the next two items involving West Care. So we are going to recess for about 10 minutes. I know we've got a lot of young ones here. We're thrilled to see them. Thanks for being here tonight. Before we recess, can I get an idea of how many people plan to speak either for or against these items, just by a raise of hands? Okay, maybe 12 to 15. Is that about what you see?
18.
18, 18 to 20. Okay, that'll give us an idea of how much time we're going to give each person, so we'll be in recess. Okay, we're ready to get started back up. This meeting is called back to order. And before I call these items, I've spoken with some of the commissioners about how to handle the time on this, and here's what I think I've decided to do. After we hear from the applicants, I'm going to give three people speaking for in favor of these items, three minutes each, and everyone after those initial three, speaking for, are going to get one minute each. We're going to do the same with those speaking against, okay? We're going to give three of you, three minutes apiece, and then after that, everyone following will get one minute each. So I'm going to follow that, if you'll adhere to the time limitations, and try not to repeat, you know, something that's been said before. I think we can run that orderly. So we are going to begin with items, related items, 44 and 45. 44 is SUP 59938. The applicant owner is West Care Foundation Incorporated for possible action on our request for a special use permit for an 87-bed convalescent care facility slash nursing home at the southwest corner of Duncan Drive and Bradley Road in Ward 5. Staff recommends approval. Related item 45, SDR 59939, for possible action on our request for a site development plan review for a proposed single-story, 87-bed, 57,999 square-foot convalescent care facility nursing home in Ward 5. Staff recommends approval. And just before we hear the staff report, I want to make this disclosure. I live just outside the notice area, but I do live within the NARA community, so I'm really not affected to a greater or lesser degree based on where I live, so I think I can make an impartial vote tonight, and I plan on participating in this. Can we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, the site is intended to be integrated with the applicant's development on the adjacent parcel to on the adjacent parcel to the west, which contains the social service provider use. Although related, the intention is for the overall site to remain as two separate parcels to maintain separation between the social services and convalescent care uses. The use qualifies as convalescent care facility by virtue of providing transitional living quarters and amenities that can accommodate more persons than a community residence as defined by Title Nineteen. Adequate screening setbacks and single-story height contributes to its compatibility with surrounding property. The residential complex is being developed to integrate with the existing social service provider to the west, however, the two parcels will remain separate. The proposed single-story buildings are appropriate adjacent to the existing low-density residential and single-story office buildings. Site adequately balances the residential buildings with open space and amenities, and the development is compatible with the uses on the surrounding parcels. Staff therefore recommends approval with conditions. Please note additional letters of protest and ecomments were received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is John Moran Jr., and I'm appearing here before you tonight, and I appreciate the privilege to appear in front of you. I also want to welcome the new commissioners to your commission, and wish them well as they do their job on behalf of the citizens of our community. I'm gonna make a presentation, and I appreciate the time that you've allotted for us to do that. This is an extremely important item on your agenda tonight for many, many, many reasons involving our community and some of the things that occur in our communities. I'd like to say that we are initially, short-form, in agreement with staff's recommendation and conditions in both item forty-four and forty-five, which I would ask that my remarks today would be attributed to both those items, as if I had made them independently of each. I'd like to also disclose that I'm not here in my capacity as the state gaming commissioner, and I have no involvement, and this project has no involvement with gaming. I'd also like to disclose that I'm past chairman of the Wildlife Commission for the State of Nevada, as well as past chairman for the Colorado River Commission. I am going to disclose that although I've been an attorney for forty years, I'm not here in an attorney capacity. I do work and assist West Care, and I'm on the foundation board, and it's one of the wonderful things that I'm able to do is to get involved in West Care Foundation and be able to provide any services that I can with my four years' experience to them. I'm also involved with numerous veterans organizations, as well as injured police officers for the state of Nevada. So, having said that and made those disclosures, I will begin with an introduction and tell you that some of the people that are here who have been very, very important in West Care, which started many years ago when my father-in-law Herb Tobman and my mother-in-law Jean Tobman were involved in this, as well as my mother and father, Goldie and John Moran. Started this with Mr. Steinberg on my left, who is our president and CEO of the foundation. And they started that with a vision, and the vision that they have that is a common thread that will run through tonight's meeting, and it's a very simple, common thread, but a very important one. And our goal and our mission statement is uplifting the human spirit. And that is extremely important to West Care, that has its roots and foundations here in Nevada, in Las Vegas, and now has branched out to many states that Mr. Steinberg will be getting into that in a moment. I'd also like to identify for the record Dr. Arnold Stalk on my right, who's assisted me in this undertaking and making this come to a point where we could bring it in front of you today and ask you for your support of this. We have a number of people in the audience here that came in late seated behind me. These, I wanted to have them here precisely for the reason that you could see, although there's a lot of things said about people at the West Care, some good, more than not, but I did want you to see the type of people that are there and need your help and your support of this application that's in front of you today. We had eight drug-free babies born last year at the facility. We have thirty children plus there now who have a roof over their head and are drug-free, alcohol-free, and enjoy sobriety and are making their way through life because of prior board, commission, and council decisions that allowed us to occupy and own the old women's hospital on Rancho Drive that is now our main facility. Also in attendance is Peggy Quigg, the chief of staff, Kevin Morris, our regional vice president, Erin Kennard, area director, Darlene Terrell, director of development, Heather Frost, director of women and children's campus, and somebody that you may know, and I know very well, forty-five years of marriage, is Marilyn Moran. And Marilyn is our vice chair, Nevada Community Action Council, and has put in a lot of time with these other folks to be able to do some wonderful things as we continue to go up and uplift the human spirit. Now, having said that, I'm going to, at this point, turn part of my presentation over, first of all, to Mr. Steinberg, and Mr. Steinberg will do his presentation, and thereafter I will continue with my presentation, if that's all right, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Dick?
Hi. Dick Steinberg, I'm the president and CEO of the West Care Foundation. We started in this community forty-four years ago. I haven't really been here at the whole time, only been at the helm for thirty-seven years. Most of you know what we do throughout the community. We have the Triad Center, we have programs up at Harris Springs Ranch in Mount Charleston, we have programs throughout the whole state, actually, now. We also have the Women and Children's Campus out on Rancho. West Care's, our foundation headquarters is here in our community. This is where we started, and this is where we still are directing traffic. West Care, since I've been involved with it, has expanded a little bit. We're now in seventeen states with a hundred and forty-four facilities. We're also out in the Pacific Islands headquartered in Guam, on our U.S. trust territory there, and then down in the Caribbean headquartered on the trust territory of St. Croix. I think, if there's, you know, I'm gonna be available for any questions as we get into stuff, but, you know, I feel real good about what we've done for this community over the years. Our board of directors are all volunteer, I'll make sure that I make the point. A couple of people kept thinking it was a for-profit group, we're very much nonprofit. I always joke about it more non-than profit any good day. But we've been serving this community, I think, for all of its issues and needs that have been brought forward to our board and to our key staff for all these forty-four years. The whole area that we're involved with has really been an evolution, if you will, from the early beginnings. When I was first hired, it was all about male heroin addicts, and then it evolved into women having issues and other kinds of problems with substance abuse issues, and then it went into other behavioral health issues. And then we got into the runaway burden services business in the community here because of issues that were being involved with school district and juvenile court at that time. So, we have taken on a lot of different areas. So, we've really become a very large healthcare organization, feel very proud about what we've done for the community, and hope that we can move this forward a little bit tonight as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Steinberg. All right. At this point, I'm going to have just a short little discussion about using this over there. If I could have the overhead camera on this particular drawing here. All right. Let's see if we can get this out of the way. This here is, just for a point of reference, I want to talk about the location, and as I'm doing that, I want to talk about what we did in the application process with staff and with the neighborhood. We have had two neighborhood meetings at the front end of this before we filed. West Care existing facility is right here. This is Rancho Drive, and this is where we currently are with the solar power plant here, and this is the subject parcel right here, which is about four-point-six-three acres back here at this back. So, having said that, when we started the application process, we went to staff, and we sat down through a series of meetings, and we talked about what our proposed project was. And at every juncture of that meeting, we, in fact, were concerned about how our facility would sit there if approved, and how it would be visible or non-visible from the neighborhood. We were concerned about traffic ingress egress. We were concerned about architecture. We were concerned about landscaping. We are concerned about continuing the path along the rear of the property, which Mr. Stalk will talk about in a moment. And we took all these different issues and the needs of the community and our experience that we had in other locations and in other states, and we decided that with this novel concept of a campus-type facility, which was desperately needed, where we could keep the women and children and families united temporarily until they could get on their feet after they completed a program of rehabilitation at our facility out front, we decided that we could have a project structured that took all those concepts into account and come up with a project that would satisfy those and reduce any concerns of our adjacent neighbors. Now, having said that, when you talk about the most important thing, which is what is around us and where are we located, as I said, we are currently right here. We have been in this location for twelve years. We're not an out-of-state developer. We're not out, we're not somebody who's just coming to the table and asking you to put your faith in us, okay? We've been here for twelve years in that location, running a facility that is fully approved, licensed by the state, and meets with all zoning codes and requirements, and also is a subject of prior city council approvals, and also approvals of this astute body here today. So, if you look around our property, you want to say, well, what is along your perimeter line right here? These are all warehousing. This is all a warehousing facility along in here. That's why we have it, office warehouse, light industrial, and that's what we have along this property line. This property line extends back here to Brady, right in here. Now, if you say, well, what's on the front of your existing facility? We have our parking, and we front on Rancho Drive, and everybody knows what Rancho Drive is. I can tell you about Rancho Drive from a personal perspective. I, some forty, maybe fifty years ago, when Rancho Drive was a ninety-five and was a one-lane highway in each area, I fell off a horse in the middle of ninety-five, and that was my instance there of using horses in that area, and I used to ride horses throughout that area. Now, having said that, what do we have along Duncan? Okay, Duncan intersects here with Rancho, and that's our property line here, and Duncan goes along here. We have an automotive repair facility, some other commercial uses, have a vacant site. We have LGEN here, healthcare and rehabilitation here. So, our property is basically surrounded by these type of uses, other than LGEN, which are really non-residential uses here, and again, warehousing here with Rancho Drive here, multifamily apartment residences out front. The section of property where we are, in fact, touching on the actual neighborhood, is right here, where there's a home here, home here, home here, and a home here. And that's along Brad, Brad, excuse me, Bradley Street. Now, that there, these houses are behind about an eight-foot wall themselves. This project, as Mr. Stalk will tell you, is all single-story, ten-foot-high structure, all single-story units in here, and will be completely walled by our own eight-foot fence. So, not only don't we have neighbors around us in single-family residential, in fact, we are less of a use because of what is there, which is non-residential area in this area. Okay? Now, if you think about traffic, and I'll just be brief on this, Arnold will get into this as well. We have a crash gate here, so there won't be any traffic coming from our property here into this area because of the fact that, you'll see when you see the other rendering, that in fact, there's a crash gate here that will not have ingress or egress except in an emergency situation. And I think that's real important. Now, keeping this drawing in mind, I wanted to show you this board, if I could, and only if I turn it like this, we can get a good shot of it. This is the same board that you saw a moment ago, but these yellow interlineations here, stickies if you will, are all the people that have supported this and have sent in letters of support. All of these people have letters that say that they support our project and support West Care, and I think that's pretty impressive wherever we touch here. Now, having said that, again, we worked with staff on these different issues. We got letters of support. We worked hard with the neighborhood. We, in fact, had the neighborhood meetings. We talked to people in the areas. Arnold himself went out into the neighborhood on occasions, and we were able to put together an application that finally got filed that took into consideration these type of concerns. We feel that we have a good project. We feel that we have a project that has proved to be successful in our community. There's not a person in this room who hasn't had a family member, or a friend, or a coworker, or a fellow employee, or somebody, acquaintance that they know, that hasn't had an alcohol or substance abuse problem. It's in our society, and the difference is, is that there are ways to fix that and help people be healthy. And you can help us continue on with that task by granting and approving items forty-four and forty-five that your own staff recommends is in full compliance with zoning code, is in compliance with the needs and requirements of the community, and is, in fact, on all fours, has been worked out through hard work, provides the type of support so that we at West Care can continue to reach our goal, which is uplifting the human spirit. You can see by the people seated behind me, these are people that are in the program. These are people that have benefited by the program, and we can do so much more if you allow us to build onto that simple four-point-six-three acres that is at the rear of our existing structure of over twelve years. We've been good neighbors. And all I can tell you is, is that at this juncture, I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Stalk, who will show you some boards of the elevations. He will show you some boards of his campus, which is basically his dream that he came up with, and we got together some time ago, as to a wonderful cookie-cutter type of a facility that we would put into other states in our union. Having said that, I'll turn it over to you, and you can go ahead and go with it.
Mr. Stalk, I know you're here as part of the applicant presentation, so I'm not going to limit your time, but I would ask you to be considerate and as brief as possible so we can hear from everyone tonight.
I will.
Thank you.
Promise.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, plenty of commissioners. My name is Arnold Stalk, eight-four-zero South Rancho Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-zero-four, on behalf of West Care. It is honored to speak here tonight about West Care Women and Children's Transitional Village. Transitional housing is the bridge to economic and social self-sufficiency. It is a tried-and-true effective method that has been done throughout the United States, and in this case, for women and children to grow in many ways, become strong, and move on into permanent housing. For over forty years, West Care's philosophy is to empower everyone who comes into contact with us to engage in a process of healing, growth, and change that will benefit them, their families, and their coworkers. Our vision is to uplift the human spirit.
Mr. Stalk, will you pull the microphone in front of you, please?
Is that better?
That's better.
Thank you, Marilyn.
The subject parcel is located at fifty-six-fifty-nine Duncan Avenue. The existing zoning is residential estates RE zone. The lot size is four-point-six-nine-plus-or-minus acres, as Mr. Moran has said. The proposed zoning request in the city of Las Vegas, if approved by the commission tonight, is, subject property is said, is currently zone RE. This application request includes a site design review for a convalescent care facility and a special use permit. The use permit of this convalescent care or transitional village is compatible and an allowable use within the RE zone. No zone change, waiver of development standards, or variances are requested in this application. We have a fifty-foot front yard, which is along Bradley, which is a requirement. We have a thirty-five-foot prairie yard. We have a twenty-five-foot wide meandering sidewalk, which picks up from Bradley where the office commercial warehouse is, and goes all along Bradley, all along Duncan, back to the ingress egress of the facility. All structures are one-story and a maximum fourteen feet high, including the pyramid, parapet, as to respect the context of the neighborhood. There are no hallways. Each village living unit opens to a green belt. Each village living unit opens to a green belt. So, every unit that you see opens to a green area. A main street, which we call it, runs through the center of the property and connects into the existing facility and on to Rancho. There will be no social services done on this site. All the intensive social services, such as medical, mental health, jobs, parenting classes, money management, all the things that West Care does, will remain in the 33,000-square-foot There are six community gardens, and we, as we do on this facility now, we partner with other agencies and other businesses to come in and train our residents how to grow vegetables and have a garden. There's an eight-foot-high perimeter decorative block wall that surrounds the facility all the way around. You cannot see out of the facility, and we've walled it that way on purpose as a decorative block wall. As Mr. Moran had said, there's a solar array farm, which is right next to the existing West Care Children's Campus, which was gotten through a grant from the NMD Energy. The site contains one vehicular egress, ingress, and egress at Duncan Drive, which is next to the...close to the Rancho frontage and across from LGEN. The drive goes through the center of the main street and terminates here at the end, where there's that crash gate that Mr. Moran was talking about. So, there's no ingress or egress to Bradley. The only way in and out of here is a coded entry, which I'm going to get to in a minute when I talk about security on the site. The site contains...I was just saying that. Bradley Road, frontage has that crash gate, and so that's the other entry. That's the only way in and out of the development. There are total of...
And on one point on that, I wanted to just interrupt for a minute. We don't encourage traffic in this area because we want to keep this free from traffic, and that's why we don't...there won't be traffic coming onto Bradley, obviously, but we want to keep our guest and staff parking is right here in this area off of Duncan, since we don't want to have vehicles down into this area.
Required spaces are 36. We have provided 44. As a special handicap required space note, all structures will comply with the American Disabilities Act requirements for total accessibility and all other accessibility requirements. Required handicap parking spaces are two. We have provided four. All area lighting be directed down so as not to shine into the neighboring areas. And I want to talk...close with West Care onsite property management and security. A property management and security protocol plan is being implemented at the Women and Children's Campus and the subsequent new West Care Women and Children's Campus Village. We'll have a 24/7/365 security policy and procedure that plan that will involve West Care staff and a West Care Residence Council. So, the residents are actively involved with the management, the operations, and the social functions, and the case plan functions of the facility. Management and security training protocols will be implemented with housing staff onsite, West Care campus camera surveillance 24/7. A security alarm system will be installed, maintained, and records kept with any activities through the entire West Care Women and Children's Campus and for the new Women and Children's Campus housing as well. Consistent communication, interaction, and coordination with Metro Police will occur. Visitors must be restricted and be on an approved visitor list. No one is allowed in this facility or out of the facility unless they're approved and controlled that way. A curfew will be established. There is a curfew established now, but there will be a curfew established for the new housing as well. No smoking off-site and loitering in the neighborhood is allowed, and there is currently a smoking area at the Women and Children's Campus that's outside, in a designated area. And we will establish a West Care Neighborhood Watch Program, which I've done several times in my career with residents, found it extremely effective, and we'll establish a West Care's Resident Council, which will interact with the public and private providers onsite. Thank you for the time that you've allotted me.
Thank you. I wanted to ask the Women and Children, our residents, if they could stand up and support our facility. I thank you very much. Thank you for coming down. It's a late hour for some of these babies, but thank you for coming. Having said that, Mr. Chairman, I am going to close. I had one speaker from an adjacent property from LGEN who is here that asked if she could address as to us being in the neighborhood and her being familiar with our operation since they are a neighbor, but she could do that at the close of my presentation, when you start asking others to speak.
That's exactly how I'd like you to do that. So, if she speaks as one of the first three, she'll get three minutes to speak in favor of the application.
That would be good, and we will have her come up. I didn't want to overlook her because she's been here for a while. Having said that, we do have, as you know, and I know everybody up here knows about West Care. We have numerous churches involved. We have numerous business supporters, on and on and on. The list is very long. I could go through them, but it would take a while. We've had both attorney generals come to the facility and their representatives. We've had Harry Reid in his office, staff, Joe Hardy. We've had Dean Heller's office, Shelley Berkeley, Deana Titus. We've had a lot of our political leaders who have come out there to look and see what we're doing. We've had some wonderful grants that have been given to West Care. We've secured a huge grant of over $350,000. We've had Home Depot and volunteers come, as well as groups from churches donating food, clothing, hygiene products, furniture. It's been incredible in the last 12 years what we've done, but we're continuing to improve, and we will continue to improve. This application process has brought about an improvement that we anticipate making in our security and the way that we do business onsite, and that has been one other change that we're making, and it's going to be a good change and a good thing that has come out of here. We're simply standing in front of you here today and asking you to please find it in your hearts and find it in your souls to approve these applications, because when we all go home tonight and we wake up in the morning and we look in the mirror and we look above, we're all going to see roof above us, and we're all going to be in our homes. The people that West Care take in are people who are down on their luck, who have had problems with substance abuse and need to be able to be like the rest of us and go home and look up, and there's a roof over their head for them and their children. This campus is designed to do that. This campus is designed because of the fact that we've found that when there is a course of conduct for our women veterans and rehabilitation, and women who are not veterans, and children, that after that, and they pass that with flying colors and get through that program, and they're clean and sober, we found that there was a period of time when they could relapse because they want to be back with their families, but there's nowhere for them to be there. That's why Mr. Stock designed this facility, where these small individual units will be with a main street, just like other nice neighborhoods and homes, and tell these women and their children come together and can get on their feet and go forward with their lives, and also be protected in a secure environment from forces and things that occur that would try to intrude on their lives, that are negative things. So, having said that, please find it in your hearts to grant approval of this. I personally would really appreciate it, and I know West Care would really appreciate it, and just allow us to continue to do good things in the community. This community needs it. We need in our community to come together as people, helping people, uplifting the human spirit, and we can do it here tonight with an approval by you guys. Send us up to city council, and we'll take our case up there, but send us up there with staff's recommendation of approval and your blessing, and we'll take it at the next level. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Okay, I'm going to open this now for public comment. Again, let me repeat how we're going to handle this. The first three speakers in favor of this application will be limited to three minutes each, and every speaker thereafter speaking in favor will be limited to one minute. The first three speaking against this project, asking us to deny it, will also be given three minutes each, and everyone thereafter, one minute. We have three microphones so that we don't have to wait between everyone coming up. I'd like anyone who wishes to speak to come on up and get in line. We'll ask you to state your name, address, and then speak to us, and again, if you would be so courteous, is try not to repeat what's been said before. Good evening. Okay, we need more of you to come up to the microphones, please.
Good evening. My name is Chairman and...
Hey, hang on one minute.
How does this work? The first three get three minutes?
The first three, well, the first six, so...
On each side, so three each?
Three on each, yes. Are you here to speak for or against?
I'm in favor of this project. My name is Lisa Mayo-Deriso. I'm a longtime community activist and somebody that lived in the northwest and in this area and have watched this parcel for years sort of be held hostage over there, trapped behind an industrial area and, you know, the other uses there. I think that this, when you look at land and you look at zoning in this community, we always want to do the highest and best use. We want to put our land to work for us in the community, and I can't think of a better way to put this land to the highest and best use than this facility here and what this does. You know, it helps provide jobs. It helps provide a transitional place for young women and people who have children. Having raised five children of my own, I know what it takes to raise a child, and certainly I came and raised children with a full spectrum of support and husbands and help and so forth, and it was still difficult. So, these women and this facility, West Care, does a great job, and it's our duty, especially after the recession, and especially after everything we've been through as a community, to come together and take parcels of land like this and put them to their highest and best use, and this is the highest and best use for this property. So, thank you for your support, and I hope you unanimously support this project.
Thank you.
Good evening. Deborah Mittman. I'm here to represent LGEN Nursing Home, which is the neighbor across the street.
You speaking for or against this?
For.
Okay.
We are in favor...
So, you have three minutes.
We are in favor. I'm going to be real short. We're in favor of the proposed project. That's it. Thank you.
I was real short.
Hi, my name is Heather Frost. I'm the director of the Women and Children's Campus. Address is 5659 Duncan Drive, and we have some clients here that would like to speak. I'm going to stand with them.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Levine. Do you need my address?
Your name and address, please.
Stephanie Levine. My address is 1509 Cobb Lane, Apartment 4, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89101. And when I got to West Care, I was very scared, shameful, and full of guilt. Everyone else had the problem. I couldn't forgive myself for the things I had done and the people I had hurt. I didn't think I was worthy of anything good, but all that has changed with the help of my counselors, my peer, and my therapist. The structure alone is one of the most important elements for me, the love that is given to all the women and children that walk through those doors. Well, there's nothing like it. Everyone knows that. Everyone knows that you are no longer alone. I now have a job, my own apartment. I'm safe. I carry all the tools West Care showed me every single day. All I know is that if I wasn't placed in West Care, I wouldn't be here, and I'm forever grateful. I finally broke the cycle with my son. I've been suffering with an...I'm a grateful recovery now that, and I've been suffering since I was 18, about 23 years. And if it wasn't for West Care, I know for a fact I wouldn't be here. If I would have had the ability to stay close to the staff, clients, and support in a safe place with my small child, I would have. It was so important. It took me six months to find housing. West Care does not believe in discharging until the client has safe, approved housing, and because of that, I was able to wait on the list for housing, and they allowed me to stay. It took six months and just for me to get housing, and I was able to stay. Today, I get up at 4:00 a.m. I wake my child up at 4:30 a.m. We catch the bus, the first bus at 5:15 to get to daycare at 6:15. Then I take the 106 to the 119, and then the 119 to the Sahara Express and go all the way to work, and then I do that once every morning, which is three hours out of my day, three hours out of my evening to get home. I really hope you guys approve this because women like, not just myself, but our kids. It's just really important.
Chairperson, for clarification, they wrote out their statements prior to because they are nervous, extremely nervous.
Okay, so we've heard from three of you now, so we want to hear from everyone who wants to speak either for or against this application. So, from here on out, if you're speaking in favor of it, your remarks will be limited to one minute.
Good evening. My name's Dawn Tudor. Address 5509 West Cheyenne Apartment D, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89108. All right. My addiction came in late in life. After the birth of my son Alec, I had difficult delivery. I spent two months recovering, wound clinics, and nurses to my home to take care of me. Pain pills made me feel alive, that I would live another day. That addiction escalated until we lost everything. We were able to get into transitional housing program where I detoxed on a church floor. Things got better, and then a few months later, I was introduced into meth, where I began my journey through hell. I lost my job, home, and sent my oldest son to live with his father so he didn't see what I was going through. Soon Alec, my youngest son, and I were homeless again for 30 days. I got back with his father, and we moved into his sister's. Our addiction went out of control, stealing, running streets, extremely violent domestic violence. Everything a woman could go through happened to me. I attempted suicide and still didn't realize the drugs were my problem. Luckily CPS stepped in and removed my son. I spent one month back on the streets begging for West Care, then I was given the opportunity to enter the DMDC program. I entered detox on October 14th, 2013. My son was reunited with me shortly before Christmas. West Care saved my life, showed me love and support that I was denied in my addiction, taught me to be a better person, better mother, and West Care taught me how to love myself again. I entered West Care broken, beaten, and with two duffel bags. Today, I work two wonderful jobs. I have my own fully furnished two-bedroom apartment that I share with my youngest son. Here I can give him the love and peace we both deserve. My life today is better than it ever has been even before my addiction. I owe my life today to the foundation that was built for me by West Care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Barber, 8713 Texas Ranger Avenue, 89129. And I just wanted to say, you know, I'm in support of West Care. I went through the program, and because of the tools and the things that West Care do, I've been able to have recovery for over 15 years. I'm a general superintendent for a local construction company, big construction company. My kids, I've had custody of my kids for almost 15 years, and my youngest son is currently a UNLV student, does Muay Thai, Jiu-Jitsu, and an honor roll student. So, you know, it's there, the tools they have and the things they do and the process they follow is very effective and very useful for our community, and I continue to go back and give my services so I can help support and provide and uplift our community like their logo says. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the application? You here, sir, to speak in favor?
No, I'm against it.
You're against? Okay. Let me just make sure to, is there anyone else speaking in favor of this project? Okay, so the first three speakers will get three minutes each, speaking against this.
Go ahead, you hold off. There's three people who have three minutes. Then let you do that.
Okay. Sure. Good evening.
Good evening. Are you...can you hear me okay? Hi, my name is Lynda Young, and I'm just very thrilled to be here this evening, and I, first of all, want to thank you all so very much for your service to our community. This takes a lot of work to do what you do, and we're grateful to your leadership. I live at 3625 Bradley Road. I have lived at this property for 36 years. It's a half-acre lot on residential estate. We are RE. Absolutely, under no circumstances are we opposed to West Care. This is beautiful. Most of us have been involved in the likes of this kind of service. We are a community that lifts up more than just in words. We lift up indeed. All of the people that came up here and spoke to you are not homeowners in the NARA area. Mr. Moran, having Harry Reid, Deana Titus, which all of us know, they don't live there. That's our area where we live. We are committed to working with U.S. Partners. If you look at your own mission statement and your value statements on your website, you say that we are committed to a world-class, vibrant, affordable... you say that we are committed to a world-class, vibrant, affordable, economically, ethnically diverse, progressive city where citizens feel safe, enjoy their neighborhood, and access their city government. We want to continue to enjoy our neighborhood. If you live where we live, and if you've seen what we've seen over the last year, you've seen people up and down that street. Our area has changed. We are rural preservation. These are mini apartments. Do we say we're opposed to it? Absolutely not. We're saying that once you change the dynamics of this neighborhood, you change this community forever. We have horses, we, we walk up and down the street, and what should we do? Should we not have some community like this in? We're saying yes, but not in our neighborhood and not in your neighborhood. Why are we saying let's do, not only one area for West Care, we need four. We need one on one end of the city, one on another end, one in the back, and one in the front. Because a community like West Care is very much needed, but it doesn't need to be where we are located. All the people who Mr. Moran indicated were in favor and sent letters, they don't live in our community. They are, they work there, they go home there, they don't provide any other assistance other than to come and say, "Elgin, we approve." Fine, you approve, but you go home. We want to be able to walk up and down our streets. Neighbors and parents and babies grow up, they may be two today, 10 years from today, they're 12, and this particular project says that they can stay there as long as they want. These are apartments, pure and simple, and you violate our code, you violate our lifestyle, you violate who we are as a community. We are the Northwest Area Residents Association, and we partnership with you. We love West Care. We appreciate West Care. But help West Care to get in a location, not only where we are, but away from where we are, and certainly not where you are, but across the city. And if I can close, how's my time? I'm done?
Your 45 seconds over. You're up.
Okay, and I'll close with my last comment here. We feel that special interest organizations and political connections have no place against residents and communities such as NARA. This is a political connection. We were told this is a done deal. We were told no need of us coming down here because you all and others have made up your mind. We're saying support homeowners and support voters. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to ask you to, to hold your applause, okay? Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Young. I appreciate it. She's a passionate, and let me tell you, she's, that's, that's Dr. Young, right there. That's our neighborhood. She's wonderful, a wonderful part of our community. And I, I want to say for me personally, I'm comfortable, look, West Care provides great things. I sit and listen to these stories, and they're wonderful stories. And I want you to know, we have West Care in our neighborhood. I'm sorry, my name's Chuck Benyon. I live at 4900 Sunbright Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada. So I live in the NARA community. And our issue here is about balance. One of the difficulties, I moved into Las Vegas in 1996, and I moved into this community in 1996. And my goal was to create community, and I've worked hard to do that. I haven't moved, I've stayed in that same neighborhood the entire time. And the, you guys know what it's like in Vegas. It's tough. You come here and you feel kind of like it's transient, some of the neighborhoods aren't as strong. I want you to know, NARA is a wonderful neighborhood. We have a good sense of community, and it's important to us. And we haven't gotten that by chance. You don't get that by chance in Las Vegas. You have to work at it, and we have worked very hard at that. We've worked hard at the kind of development that will, that has been brought into the community, and we've really worked hard to make sure we have, we don't have high-density housing in our neighborhoods. This is a rural preservation neighborhood. That means there's horse properties, these properties are a little larger, and we have a good sense of community. I've worked very hard as well. In the year 2000, I looked around and said, "We need to have a park here in this neighborhood." And I worked for three years to get a park in that neighborhood. It's there now, it's Patriot Park, a seven-acre park right next to the elementary school. We had to work hard. We partnered with Las Vegas and Clark County School District that owns the property to be able to get that. But it's interesting that one of the things we did for that park was we wanted to have a lot of input. One of the input was, "Let's have a skateboard area." We did. We put a skateboard, skateboard park area there. Well, we found that it was bringing in a lot of people from outside of our community. They didn't share our values, they didn't share our community interests, and it was tough. It was, it brought up graffiti, it was rough in the, in the park, people were not going to the park as a result of that. We ended up having to remove the skateboard area from it, and it changed the dynamic of our, of our, of our park and allowed it to be a much more involved, family-related park. That's kind of an example of some unintended consequences sometimes of, of, of what we do, how we plan things. I would say this, anybody that comes before you and says that West Care has not changed the nature of our community does not live there or is not telling you the truth. It has changed nature. Now, we're willing to take, to take that. I think every community should be willing to say, "We'll take our portion of, of this difficulty that these people have." I will tell you, my wife, my, my wife personally is working with someone at that community right now, Debbie. Wonderful gal. I feel for her situation. I think we can do good things for them. But when you create an imbalance, when you add this much to our neighborhood, you're asking us to do more than is our share. And I think that's what Dr. Young is trying to say. Let every neighborhood have their share. We certainly do, we want to help them, but at a certain point, it becomes difficult for us to do so, and this, I can tell you, will be a dramatic change to our community that we, we beg you to not do to this, to this community that we've worked so hard and invested so much in to create this community sense. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Benyon. Good evening.
Thank you. Lex Anderson, 3709 Water Hole Street. I'm a 30-year resident. I've been a member of NARA for 20 years. I oppose this agenda item. This is all about location. It's always all about location. I want to talk about the code. It's a little bit esoteric, but I think it's, it's important. And I promise I stay within my, within my three minutes. So what I want to say is concise and it's backed up by a more lengthy narrative and documentation given to Commissioner Creer and to Councilman Barlow. It's clear that after some eight years, West Care's primary objective is to build a brick-and-mortar facility on this five-acre site instead of the functional buffer and office structure proposed in '06 and putting it up for sale in '08. The premise that West Care is using to circumvent the zoning and buffering criteria for high-density housing next to both rural estate and rural preservation is that by giving the facility a convalescent identity, the construction, construction does not require zoning, zoning change. And they are using the definition chapter 1918, page 516 of the City of Las Vegas Unified Development Code to justify this. Unified Development Code definition for convalescent facility is in error. It appears that whoever wrote the definition, I know, I worked in the business for 45 years, okay? It appears that whoever wrote this definition simply added the two words "mental illness" to an otherwise generally acceptable definition of what a convalescent facility and nursing home should look like because they had no place else to put it and perhaps because it came, it seemed reasonable because it came under the Mental Health and Medical Licensing Department, under the Department of Health and Human Services. This is probably an honest mistake written by a non-medical person. Again, behavioral science, health intervention, behavioral, behavioral science, health intervention and therapy such as mental health, drug or alcohol rehab, and various addiction and behavior items is not the same as physical science, medical, and surgical intervention. These two categories identify themselves from each other professionally, and they qualify with a quintessential apples and oranges comparison. If West Care is allowed to use this unified code development, development code as a stand, this definition will set forth a precedent. And because it'll become the poster child and case study example for essentially any behavioral intervention or social service entity or low-income housing to establish a facility virtually in any neighborhood in the city that is not protected by a gated community, a gated access, or a professional management company under the title of convalescent. The outcome of this agenda may result in a legacy decision in regards to both land use and community identity. And the community residence, two words that are listed in the code, it refers to milieu. That's a medical term. It's a psychological milieu of the, of the area. And convalescence is a medical term. It's not a high-density housing term. So thank you very much.
Excuse me through you, Mr. Chairman. May I just ask this gentleman what his address was? I missed it.
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Will you restate your address?
I'm sorry. So what was your address?
3709 Water Hole.
Water Hole. Thank you. 3709, thank you.
Okay, thank you. For the remainder of people speaking against this item, your remarks will be limited to one minute.
All right. My name is James Henry Kruger. I live at 4113 Villa Flores Street, 89130. I'm a proud graduate of Boystown, Nebraska, where Father Flank has said, "There's not such thing as a bad boy." At this time now, it's not a bad boy ergo, just like West Care. It's a great organization, it's a great help to our community, but it's not an apartment building. I'm also a member of Veterans Helping Veterans. We help veterans all over this town. I go from Henderson to Boulder City, all over, and we do it with not them living on premises. Everything a veteran has ever got, or any child has ever got that came out of an orphanage, they've had to fight their way up. And if they're not willing to fight, if they're not willing to seek assistance, they're not going to get it. By giving them a place to live, by giving them something, apartment that brings down our neighborhood is wrong. We need to help each other, yes, but help each other, help them mainly. It's not just helping one, it's helping and saw and taking care of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Kramer, 5209 West Gilmore Avenue. I've been in the community since 1999. I'm the treasurer of the NARA Association. I am a homeowner, I'm a voter, and I'm very active in the community. Wanted to bring a little reality to this. This proposed, proposed facility is not an 87-bed convalescent care nursing home facility. It's an open campus rehab facility. There's no nursing care occurring, there's really no monitoring going to occur. The proposed facility is stated as 87 beds. That's simply not true. There are 87 apartments, units, proposed as part of this multifamily housing project. Let's just call it what it is. It's a multifamily housing project. There's 87 units. Number of beds? Well, conservatively, if you do 2.5 beds per apartment, you're upwards of 200 beds. That's the reality. So if you put heads in beds, as they say in the hotel business, you're between 200 and 300 people in that community. That's next door to my street, 5209 West Gilmore, it's right there. I'm confident that you folks can all figure out what the, this all leads to with respect to the impact on our community as a whole, including business owners, property owners, and the already overcrowded Parsons Elementary School, which is next to the park. This is unacceptable. This is not the place or the area for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ron Dupay. I live at 5109 West Gilmore Avenue, Las Vegas, 89130. I'm a 50-year resident of Las Vegas. I've lived in NARA community since 1998. I'm a property owner, a voter, and an active in the community. I'm opposed to SUP 59938, Special Use Permit for West Care Nevada. NARA rural estates is defined quite specifically as half-acre-plus lots with single-family homes. Any and all commercial development have specific guidelines as well with specifics for buffets, landscaping, setback, egress, and regress. Multifamily housing placed on a piece of property zone at C2 is still multifamily housing. This is unacceptable. This is not the place or the area for this project. The proposed facility is not a convalescent care nursing home facility. This proposed facility is multifamily, government-subsidized housing, subsidized via federal grant monies. This is unacceptable. This is not the area for this project. I'm all for West Care, just not in this rural community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairperson, commissioners, members, greetings. My name is Frank Bolshazey. I live at 4809 West Gilmore Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89130. First of all, I'd like to extend laudatory praise to all the ladies who are striving to reach their goal, but that's not my issue. I'm not worried about all the manipulation through the last 20 years of withdrawing, holding, tabling, pulling back so that this issue can be carried on and on and on. That's not my issue. I'm not worried about the vocabulary that's constantly changing from rehab, post-rehab, nursing home, convalescent. I'm not sure where it's going next. That's not my issue. My issue is really simple. West Care has asked us each time, with each step, with each wiggle along the way, what is the feeling of the neighborhood? The overall response has been negative and not in support of this. How many times are you going to ask? How many different ways you going to ask and still get the same response?
Thank you.
Hey, hello, how you doing? My name is Charles Benza. I live at 5241 Gilmore Avenue. I'm directly across the street from what West Care is proposing. I am a NARA member. We've, live in a really great part of Las Vegas. I've been in the home for 21 years now. We are here to try to preserve our piece of Las Vegas history. We live in an area where you can, if you wish, ride your horse to the corner store. This is what Las Vegas used to be like. This area is rural, and by letting West Care bring in what they are proposing, our rural estate's lifestyle will be in jeopardy. Don't get me wrong, we've had our share of crime and vandalism in our area. Mailboxes have been broken into, graffiti throughout the area, but we're a close-knit community. We stick together, and we try to take care of whatever issues come about. If the city graffiti team cannot come out, we as a community take care of it ourselves to provide and keep our neighborhood looking good. We have a lot of pride and, in our neighborhood. We just want to kind of hang on to what we believe is old Las Vegas and just preserve a piece of history that we live in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chairperson and commission, commission members. I'm Linda West Myers. I live at 5104 Cold River Avenue. I live in one of the seven NARA gated communities. And even, now, I'm getting old. I need my glasses so I can read my notes. Even though the gated communities of Plaza San Miguel, Park San Miguel, Ranch of San Miguel, Willadale, Sweetwater 1 and 2, and now Kobe Creek are not rural preservation, they were created with the endorsement of NARA as reasonable functional buffers, functional buffers against potential high-density construction and buffers from the major street arterials. Over the years, we've had many residents from these buffer-gated communities serve on the NARA Executive Board, including myself, and support the efforts to keep our area the desirable place that it is. Culturally and socio-economically, we complement the established rural preservation overlay area, and the issues that affect these homes also affect us. We are part of the same family. West Care's efforts to expand their facility affect many of us in the same ways as it affects our sister rural estate community neighbors. For that reason, we oppose West Care's refusal to establish a functional buffer between its present facility and the community, and we oppose the 87-unit high-density housing facility, whatever identity they want to call it. And I find it just interesting to note from former First Lady Don Gibbons, who is now working with the National Council of Juvenile and Family Judges, in issues like human trafficking, juvenile justice, domestic violence, and helping our families to become whole and remain whole, that they've designated Las Vegas as one of just a few model communities throughout the nation so that in the future, some of the needs that West Care serves, hopefully, we won't need. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Lubek. I live at 4808 Jay Avenue. I've resided there for 39 years, and I just wanted to comment on the internal environment. I was with a church group that volunteered at West Care at one time, and when I was, when I was inside there, I didn't notice monitoring at all. I noticed that things were rather distracted and disorganized, there was disorganization, a lot of disorganization. I'm just concerned that what's being represented about security and monitoring- I'm just concerned that what's being represented about security and monitoring and et cetera, if it's just going to be a truthful statement.
Thank you.
Excuse me, through you, Mr. Chairman. What year did you work there, ma'am? What year did you work there?
I was there, I volunteered.
What year was that?
That was in 2000.
Will you come to the microphone, please?
Just a quick answer.
I was with a church group volunteering, and that was in, it was a while ago, it was about 2015, I'm going to say six years ago.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just wanted to reiterate.
Your name and address.
Harry Windhorse, 5225 West Gilmore. I just wanted to reiterate everybody's point up here tonight, especially Chuck Binions. Everybody in this neighborhood that has spoken has been longtime residents of this community, and that creates a certain feel. As soon as you put a large amount of people in one area, you take that away. You turn a really tight-knit, long-term committed community and you make it transient at a flip of a hat. And I just wanted to reiterate that so everybody, you know, has a good handle on that concept, what will happen. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Chairperson Moody and the rest of your fellow associate commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to give me the time to speak. My name is Jim Walker, and I live at 4116 Villa Flora Street, and that is about one block away from the property in question. And I see we've even got more, so I'll try to be brief. One of the functions, I believe, that you do is try to look at the most efficient use of the property, and this property has solar power adjacent to it. And I don't represent Elon Musk, nor do I represent his power company, of which the state of Nevada has allowed him to build a factory up in Reno, Nevada, but I wish I did represent him or work with him, because I think that they do a great job. And in any event, one of the better efficient uses of this property would be to expand the solar power capability of that property into the neighborhood as well, and I think that ought to be considered as an alternative use of this property. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Joanne Passer, 5125 West Gilmore Avenue. Original homeowner in the area, 1991. I am opposed to this facility. Arnold and John Moran have more than once told us about all the security that they have. I invite you on any Saturday, Friday or Saturday night, to come out to the neighborhood and see the line of cars, the cigarette butts, the people sitting on the sidewalks. During the week, you see the gals with their strollers going down Rancho without a sidewalk. You know, God knows what happens if somebody could take out a whole, you know, a whole line of women and children. There seems to be a better place, that they could have a daycare, their rehab facility, their social services, someplace that is better suited than our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Randy Rodi, 3741 Bradley Road. I commend them for putting up a large block wall and having a security system, but I wonder who it's for? Is it for the residents to be protected? It certainly is to protect us. The other thing I wonder about, they have these runaways that come in, they've told us that these runaways just exit, and then they report them to the police, there's nothing they can do about it. So where do they exit to? To my house? I don't know. There's a lot of things that they're saying that need to be uncovered, that you people need to investigate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Harvey Starett. I live at 3701 Bradley Road. I'm actually one of the newer members of the NARA community. I've been there for three years, and I am a homeowner and a voter. I had moved to Las Vegas with the Air Force and retired and loved the area and stayed here, and the NARA area is one of the only places, the closest thing I've seen to a country living lifestyle in this area, and I am worried that the increased traffic, residents obviously, and visitors is going to be detrimental to that lifestyle that we enjoy and cherish out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is John Stanton, 5209 West Gowan Road, G-O-W-A-N, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89130. Moved there in 1977, May 77, when Gowan Road was a dirt road and did not even go through to Rancho. Access to my residence at that time was up Tom Boulevard, which cut through the Rebel Parking Lot at Cheyenne and Rancho, it's been that long. I've seen a lot of changes. In front of my house, I faced north, there was nothing but desert, so I've seen one or two houses grow up. Every one of those houses, including the gated communities within the NARA community that did come before NARA, that asked for approval and integration into our community, did so with the blessing of NARA presenting their case and such. Other houses that were built around there, built in accordance with the law, one unit per half acre, R.E. Estates Rural Preservations. I oppose this plan tonight on the basis of the law of the one unit per one half acre for the low-density housing. No matter what you call it, it's going to be high-density housing. In 1996, had an airplane crash on my property, and imagine the liability had that property been high-density housing, and multiple people had been killed because of the high density there. Thank goodness it was just one unit on a half acre and not a wolf in sheep's clothing saying that this is a convalescent facility, which it's not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and commissioners, I'm Lamar Riley, 3404 Bond Court, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89130. As a member of NARA and past president, I strongly oppose the West Care's effort to expand their facility. Now, NARA is not opposed to West Care, which is what has been painted tonight. We don't oppose West Care, we oppose them expanding it where they're planning on it. So I hope that the Planning Commission will deny their request for this application, and there are other places in this city that would fit. I can't, I probably shouldn't mention the place on Bonanza and 8th Street, because that place is where the Moulin Rouge was, but that's been a disgrace to the city for years. Maybe they can look at that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Riley. Good evening.
Good evening. Excuse me. My name is Sherry Stanford. I'm located at 4812 Lufkin Avenue. I am in the gated community of Sweetwater 2. Been at that residence for 16 years, and I moved into the community with the expectation of it remaining, from what I was told by NARA, that it was a preservation area and that the builders would follow suit according to the law of the density. My main concern, I am not in favor of this expansion, because I'm really concerned about the property values. My husband passed away six years ago, and I found myself in a situation where I could not sell because of the property value, it started to come up now, and I have pride enough that I want to stay, but if I choose to move, I'm concerned about the loss in the value of my property and the density of the people in the area that will be attracted into our area, that will start graffiti all over and all kinds of different security issues. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else wishes to speak, will you come on up to the microphones, please?
My name is Neressa Thomas. My husband and I own the property right across from West Care. We built Thomas Automotive. That property was purchased by my parents in 1952 when we moved to Las Vegas, and when we built our business, the auto repair shop there, the facility that West Care is in now was the only other building there in a big area. And my husband and I built it. We have four sons, two of our sons work in that family business, and at this point, we try to support West Care, like many others have said, they do a great work, but we do not support this expansion. I want to dispute this map that the man had with all these yellow dots on it, that all the businesses around support it. He put a yellow dot on ours, and we did not sign any papers or give him permission to do that. So if we don't support it, and his map shows that we do, then how many other businesses in that area don't support it? And he presumably put yellow dots on it. So I want to congratulate the girls who succeed in the West Care program. It takes a lot of courage, and I don't know if I would have enough courage if I had an addiction or problems like they do. But for the ones who succeed, there are failures, and those who are struggling. I know recovery from an addiction is often two steps forward and maybe four steps back. And West Care says they're a drug-free facility, and that their new expanded area is going to be drug-free also. Well, those who are struggling or failing go off campus to do their drugs and smoking, and many of them come to our business, on our property, and often we're cleaning up drugs and trash.
Ms. Thomas, I'm going to stop you. I've let you go more than a minute over.
Okay, all right, all right, okay. So it happens, so they go into the neighborhood, and if they're going to expand their facility, there are going to be more of those who are struggling and failing concentrated in our area and roaming through our neighborhood, so we oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Does anyone else wish to be heard, either for or against these items? All right. I'm going to give one of the applicants some time for a response. So come on up, Mr. Moran.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners. Just a couple of comments, and then I'll be brief on that. I wanted to address a few things. There were actually a few real good inquiries from a couple of the people that spoke from the neighborhood, and I wanted to make a comment and provide some information for them. In our backup work that we did, we found that the stay of these people that we would have in this facility would be limited to 18 months. So that would be an 18-month cushion for them. It wouldn't be an indefinite stay, where they could stay forever and ever and ever, because that's not what the program is about. The program is about uplifting the human spirit and getting these people back into a productive state, so that they can then provide care for their children and get on with their lives. So we're looking at an 18-month limit, which I think is important, and that was one of the questions from one of the people from the NARA group. The other statistic is that we project that there will be 145 occupants, give or take, that's an approximation, which is composed of 48 single women and 39 women with 58 children. 90% of the children residing at the village would be between newborn to five years old. So that's what we're projecting as to the age classification and designation in terms of amount of stay and the people that would be staying there. That was one question that I thought was important. What we've heard from a lot of the people tonight that have spoke against West Care is similar to what I heard at the first meeting that I attended. And at that meeting that I attended, it was, "We think West Care is a wonderful facility, it's a great facility, they do a good job, but we don't want them in our neighborhood." Okay? So it comes back to the same thing that I've heard over 40 years of doing this type of work, not in my neighborhood, seems to be a common thread that runs through a lot of this, but unfortunately, and they mentioned me by name, and my neighborhood, I don't live in the neighborhood, I can tell you about my neighborhood. I lived in the same house for 45 years. I have five horses in the backyard of my house. I got rid of the horses. Things change. Salvation Army is around the corner from me, frequently helping homeless people, right in our neighborhood. We're in one of the most well-established old neighborhoods. We run septic tanks and wells, and we never for once said, "Not in my neighborhood," to anybody over there in our neighborhood. So all I can tell you is, is I'm not too concerned about babies being pushed in strollers, and I'm not too concerned about skateboarders, and that seemed to be another concern that we had there. I would say this, to the few of the people said, you know, "We're a rural preservation location." The gentleman who spoke up here last, I had a conversation with him at the neighborhood meeting that I attended, he was the president at the time, very nice, he made some nice comments. It's my understanding he supported the project then. If he thinks that that neighborhood is going to be a neighborhood where nothing is going to change, he's got to take a look at the map. And the map is really, history is the best teacher. And if you look at where this is located, and again, this is West Care here, and this is a four-acre and change parcel right here, so it's right in this area, but if you look here, this really doesn't look like horse country to me. You've got automotive repair, automotive repair. One thing I should have mentioned earlier, we have the Department of Veteran Affairs right here, okay, which has been in contact with us and talking about, you know, our proximity to them for our vets. You've got Algen here, and again, you have warehousing. To me, I grew up on horses. This doesn't look like horse country to me. It kind of looks like what my neighborhood looks like after we got rid of the horses, and unfortunately, it's, I can understand them wanting to preserve their neighborhood back here, but at the end of the day, this change has happened. This is all multi-apartment residents over here, and I've been to enough meetings to know that renters aren't second-class citizens. People can't afford to have houses, and they have to have multifamily where they can affordably live. And so I take offense to somebody somehow saying that because renters are a lower-class citizen, and that we don't want renters around us or anywhere. Well, they're already here on the other side of the street from West Care, so I don't know, I don't get the argument there. Lastly.
Okay, I'm not going to hear anything from the audience, so you need to keep your thoughts to yourself. Everyone's had a chance, so I don't want to hear anyone speaking from the audience, please.
I did, I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. I did want to say that there was a comment, "Country lifestyle," and that's wonderful. You can have a country lifestyle, and I think that's great, but the country lifestyle isn't going to mix well with this project. I asked the gentleman, he spoke tonight, and he lived over here, and he talked about the parcel here, at the neighborhood meeting, and he can come up here and correct me if I misunderstood him, at the neighborhood meeting, but I asked him point-blank about, "Why doesn't he want a West Care facility there?" And he said, "'Cause he wants to ride his horses on that property." And I said, "Well, that's property that belongs to West Care, and you're riding your horses there. Did you think that was going to last forever?" He said, "Well, that's why I don't like it, is because I can't ride my horses if it gets built." Well, you know, that doesn't make sense to me, okay? I like horses and I like horse people, but when it comes to the real things in life, uplifting the human spirit, I've got to be saying, "I'm going that way." And, you know, horses be damned. Now, the last part of this is, is I wanted to introduce some of the record, Mr. Chairman, and I have copies for all of the planning commissioners here. It's a letter from Sheriff Joseph Lombardi, and I don't know if your clerk would introduce this into the record, and that's a copy, and I have copies for each of the planning commissioners here. I better keep one for myself, so I can refer to it.
We'll be happy to make that part of the record.
And that should be made part of the record. This is a letter from the sheriff, and there's a couple of parts in here, I'll paraphrase without taking time, since we've been at it a long time. And the sheriff in here indicates that, quote, "My office of Intergovernmental Services has previously reviewed and signed off on the plans," end quote. So the sheriff has looked at these plans. The sheriff has looked at this location, and the sheriff's own comments are, "As my office of Intergovernmental Services has previously reviewed and signed off on the plans," okay? Now, I would also put into the record, paraphrasing again, what the sheriff says in the last paragraph. "West Care has been a great community partner in providing these services." And he goes on to say, "He supports rehabilitation and transitional programs that assist residents of our community to move forward and become productive citizens." And I can't believe there's not a member, Mr. Chairman, of your board that would not like to see our citizens advance and move forward and be more productive citizens, and they will continue to do that if you allow us the right to do that and put in this really state-of-the-art campus there. And I can assure you, there won't be any difficulties, and it'll be something that nobody in the neighborhood will see, because it's only going to be 10, 13, 14 feet high, but it's going to be behind an eight-foot wall. And it's going to bring a lot of things, but the most important thing is going to be, is it's going to do some real good things for people in our community who have problems and need help, and they don't have a roof over their head. And I'm not going to turn And I'm not going to turn my back on those people and I know you won't either. So thank you. If there's any questions, let me know what they are and I'll call up some of the staff to answer them here until you vote.
Thanks, Mr. Moran.
Thank you.
I am closing the public comment and I want to thank all those who have participated. We are now going to discuss this as a commission. There may be a few limited questions for the applicant or someone else for that matter, but thank you very much and this is open now for discussion. Commissioner Trowbridge.
Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate everyone's input, pro or con, but I would be remiss if I didn't comment about the conduct of, not the meeting, but the behavior of some of the children that are in attendance. I've been to literally hundreds of meetings like this and while some of these mothers may have started off with a rough hand, they have turned out to be the mothers of some really great kids. I mean, they're all sitting here behaving themselves and they're deserving, so give them a hand for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have met, first I want to congratulate and to thank all of the ladies that have come out with their children and have overcome, are going through recovery as well. You know, my father was a physician in town and he was a recovering alcoholic and went back and treated alcoholism for over 40 years. And actually, West Care was one of the facilities before it was the Women and Children's Facility that is today. He was a physician there. I used to drive down Rancho and he said, "I do some work over there." So very familiar with Rancho, I mean with West Care. And I applaud all that West Care does. You guys are shining examples of the work that is being done there, so congratulations to you. Some of the issues though, I've met with both sides individually. And my first Neighborhood Association meeting I attended as a commissioner was the NARA meeting and there was overwhelmingly support not to approve West Care. It was a topic, it was the hot issue and it was very adamant that the residents there were not against West Care, but they were against the facility that's being built on those five acres. I live in a rural preservation area as well. In Bonanza Village, Martha King in Washington, we have horses. I wake up, even though I'm in the middle of town, I wake up and I hear chickens and roosters and it is a community that likes being rural and so I can respect where NARA is coming from. I would like to think that there is an ideal facility for West Care to build this facility. I should say, a, an ideal location to build a facility. I can understand the issues regarding the high density. No matter what it is, it seems as though this is a high-density unit that is going to be built, potentially going to be built in a low-density area. And so I have conflicts with that. I also have conflicts with stories that I hear from both sides. I hear from the pros that there's no issues with West Care. We don't know about the issues that are happening at West Care. We haven't heard from the residents that there are any problems there. And then I talk to the homeowners that live in the area and I hear all the issues that I heard tonight and they're continually being issues. I don't know which one is right or wrong. The residents that live there that are there 24 hours a day, drive in and drive out, see it and they experience it. So somewhere along the way, there's conflicts of issues with what's really going on there. And I think, I asked that that be worked out. I didn't make the second association meeting, I was out of town unfortunately, you know, but I heard back that it was about the same as the first one. I love West Care, I applaud everything that they're doing. I don't believe that without the neighborhood's support, that this is in the best interest of the neighborhood that is presented there. Hopefully, we can work if this is approved or not. There's got to be an ideal location to build this facility. We have a wonderful city, a very caring city. The Moran family, I've known for majority of my life, I grew up with their kids. They are wonderful individuals. They have given a lot to this community and they will hopefully continue to give a lot back to this community. And hopefully, we can find the right spot for this if it's not approved here. If it is approved here, then, you know, I do my best support as best as possible. I mean, anything and everything that I can do to make it successful, but the neighborhood just is, does not want it and it's going to be tough for me to get behind it. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you, good evening. I have so much to say, but I'm not going to take up all the time tonight because we've been here a long time and we've heard the complaints and we've heard the great things. And I wanted to say to the lovely Mrs. Young, it could be next to my house because I was one of those girls 27 years ago. That was me. And I still struggle. And every once in a while, I still go to a meeting or a private meeting because I still want to be like them. And I wanted to break the chain for my children and that's what drove me. I had a very disabled son and I couldn't care for him doing drugs and drinking and waking up the next day on the floor with him asking me for Cheerios. So they could live next door to me because I could be and I was one of them. So just to put that credit, just to put that out there, they could absolutely be my neighbor. The second thing I want to say is, I've lived in Las Vegas for 56 years and I am 56 years old. My husband sat on this planning commission many, many years ago, I think, I don't even know when it was, but I know he was on here for nine or 10 years. And I can remember him coming home and saying, "Gosh, that NARA group, they don't want those apartments across the street." And two years later, "That NARA group, they don't want low, little-density shopping center. And that NARA group, they don't want office warehouse. And that NARA group, they don't want single-family houses because they're not over a half a million dollars, they're $120 little cul-de-sacs." And you know, I got to tell you, I don't understand how the power you've had over 30 years that I know of, of controlling a piece of property that's owned by West Care. You don't own it. You don't own it. They own it. It's their right to build on it. It's their right to cover these kids so they don't go home to nothing, so they come out learning a skill, so they come out having a job and we work as a community. And every one of you said, "We want to work with them, but not next door. We want to do something for them, but not in my backyard." What have you done for them in the last 10 years? Have you dropped off clothes? Have you dropped off diapers? I don't know what you've done, but I will tell you this. I don't care if it's John Moran, I don't care if it's Arnold Stock, and I don't care if it's Joe Smith that I've never met before, but finally, this property was held hostage, you know why? For this project. I'm glad nothing was built on it in the last 30 years because I say to West Care, "Welcome, build it and thank you."
Commissioner Slotman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you, we looked at stuff like this in the past where it actually wasn't across the street from a neighborhood, it actually was built into the neighborhood. And, you know, we looked at it a little bit differently with a bigger, having a bigger impact on that neighborhood. And I think where this is a little bit different is it has a 30-to-50-foot buffer zone, it has that block wall. You know, I really understand the neighbors definitely concerned about what goes in there, but if it's not this, what is it? Is it commercial? Is it something that's going to produce noise? Is it something else? You know, and I heard the comment, "Not in my neighborhood." I would put it in my neighborhood because currently what I have is drug dealers, prostitutes, homeless, and I live on Fremont Street. And I'll tell you what, I'd much rather have this group of people cleaned up, living next door to me, than what I'm actually having to deal with on a daily basis. You know, I get in my car and I go out of my brand-new townhome community and I love it and going up and down Fremont Street, but then if I walk out there with the drug dealers and the prostitutes and this and that, it's a little bit concerning. So in my backyard, put another West Care and let's put one on every side of town. That's my thoughts. We'll hear what the rest of the commission has to say and we'll go from there.
Commissioner Flenkes, if it's okay with you, I'm going to go ahead and make my remarks.
All right.
I'll go to you. You know, there's not, there aren't many things more noble than uplifting the human spirit, but I want to remind everybody on both sides of this that we are a land-use board. And as we look at this, we are confined not only as to what we decide, but on what basis we make that decision. And this is a close one for me. As I sit here, I'm still not sure how I'm going to vote on this. And I want to articulate why it is that I'm having a tough time making this decision. As we make land-use decisions, one of the things we consider is, is this project and this application compatible with the surrounding areas? Well, if you ask me if it's compatible with NARA at large, and as I've said already, I live there, so I'm very familiar with it, no, it's not. NARA is a rural preservation community. But then if you narrow that in and you start looking at the surrounding areas, there's a vacant site to the northwest. You have LGEN to the north. You have West Care to the west. You have Office and Light Industrial to the south. And you have three or four homes that are residential that would be affected to the east side. There is a good landscape buffer here that should shield that from the neighbors across the street. They've agreed to make this one-story. I think in some respects, it's good transitional zoning. I guess I would finish my remarks by saying this. However this ends up, okay, whether it's denied or approved, if this goes on to City Council, one of the questions that NARA did not answer tonight for me is if you don't want this project, what is it that you want in there? Because if you're expecting a residential community to come in, I don't see it happening. If you're expecting horse properties to come in there, I don't see that happening. And someone needs to figure out what it is that we are willing to live with in there if this goes forward to City Council. So we'll see how this goes. Commissioner Flenkes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unlike what Chairman Moody said where this was a close call, I gave this a lot of consideration, gave it a lot of thought. I don't think it is a close call. I look at this very carefully. This is the type of facility that our community needs. We need more of it. It's got a tremendous mission and it's coming and it's doing something very positive for the community. And I don't like hearing that "not in my backyard" argument. I hear it quite frequently after sitting on this board for about six years. You know, I've heard the talk tonight, "We love it, but we want it somewhere else." So it can be somebody else's problem. And that's the attitude that I hear when I hear those type of things. On this right here is, when you look at this from a land-use perspective, does it make sense? And the question, I think it clearly makes sense. You, you know, our board over the last few years has taken great pains to preserve the neighborhoods. We've had quite a few folks come in from the rural preservation areas and fought that. We've supported them and we've done those things to support and maintain the rural nature of the neighborhoods. I don't agree with the comment that, "Hey, it's coming anyway, you can preserve your neighborhood." And I think this really does not affect your neighborhood. I'm not convinced that this facility is going to change the character of the neighborhood. I'm not convinced that it's going to impact the neighborhood adversely. You always hear the same old cliche, "It's going to drive the value of my property down." I just don't buy it. I don't see how that it's going to occur. I think the biggest impact on the neighborhood is just simply the knowledge that it's there. The opposition to this tonight's been based on a premise, I believe, that this is just a high-density development. It's not a high-density development. It is a convalescent care facility as defined by the ordinances. I heard one gentleman talk about the ordinance was wrong. Ordinance is not wrong, this is a convalescent care facility. It qualifies under the clear language of the ordinance. Furthermore, this project is within a 330-foot buffer area. This is a tremendous buffer between your neighborhood, Rancho, and what's happening around you. You've got a storage facility to the south, you've got a nursing home to the north, you've got commercial building going up and down Rancho as we speak. So this is really a good buffer for you between all that's happening on Rancho. With, I could go on and on about this, but really, the bottom line is, we have to look what's good land use, we have to look what's good for the community. This is a good land use. We always try to take in the wants and the needs of the neighborhoods and we always try to do that, but it's not always possible to give the neighbors exactly what they want. And this is unfortunately for the neighborhood, one of those situations where we can't give you what you want. So this is one thing I'm going to strongly support approval of.
Commissioner Cherry.
Mr. Chair, through you, I think I've looked at a site plan that's very well thought out. I think Arnold Stock has a good idea how a project like this fits and integrates into a community. I also, like Commissioner Slotman, live in an area where every day outside of my window, I see a drug deal, prostitution, burglary on a regular basis. It's unfortunate, but that's what happens where I live. So I really don't buy into the "not in my backyard" case as well because I'd love to see West Care in my backyard. So like I said, I'll be brief, I will be supporting the application. Thank you.
Commissioner Trowbridge.
Thank you. There was a comment made that I didn't like when I heard it. And it was that this was going to be political and the deal was done. I want everybody to know that I did not speak, nor hear from, nor see, nor visit, nor read anything that wasn't a matter of the record. And this is coming from either the NARA side or the West Care side. I contacted, the only information I have is what I have read and what I saw when I went out and drove the area like I do on these plans. I'm familiar with NARA. I must have been back to the planning commission for a couple of months, but I previously had served almost eight years and had sat through several of these hearings involving NARA. And so I know the area, I know the attitude. But what I observed when I drove the area was an eight- or nine-foot wall. I got out of my car and stood up and I'm 6'2" and when I reach up, what's that, eight? It was beyond that. So there's a big wall there that is north, the north side of Bradley, north, it's north of Gilmore, on the east side of Bradley, totally walling itself off. When I looked at the area, there's a beautiful, you could put it any place you want to in this town and it would look good. That's the meandering landscape walkway on the west side of Bradley, south of Gilmore. You know, West Care has proposed to continue that landscape scheme. You know, I don't know how much arm-twisting went on to accomplish that, but that's a major give. And the other thing that was said that's absolutely true, this is a land-use board. I heard the names of the streets that everyone that testified in opposition reside on. There was a few people that lived on Gilmore. The rest lived someplace else. If you look at the impact area, that's what the planning commission looks at, the impact area. Most of the people that spoke in opposition lived outside of the impact area. I don't have it technically right here in front of me, but I'd like to see this map that has the big circle around it showing the impact area was drawn back a couple of miles so I could plot where the opponents were coming from. We heard that there's seven different divisions within NARA. How far to the east do they go?
Far.
Quite far. And to say that, you know, putting this in is gonna have drug paraphernalia and, and runaways coming through my house and they're gonna be, are they gonna wind up in my yard? You know, come on. You know, let's, let's be real. I think that looking at this strictly from a land use, the amenities that are provided, the existing development along Gilmore, I'm sorry, Brady, that seems to be the, the line of embarkation. You go west of, of, of Bradley and it's one type of development, and east of Bradley, it's another type of development. But Bradley's the dividing line. And when I look at it from a land use perspective, this is an excellent project for that to infill. Everybody else talks about, "What are you gonna do with an infill lot?" I've heard no one from Nora come forward and say, "We'll buy that lot." Or, a more attractive alternative might be the people from Nora wanted to come in and say, "From Gilmore south, as far as you wanna go, build your nine-foot wall and put a gate there at Gilmore. That would solve your problem."
Yeah.
And everybody that's got a half-acre lot, I'm not gonna make socioeconomic decisions, but I'll bet you would just be a few thousand dollars a head, which is affordable. So I'm gonna be supporting this aggressively. And I thank the people that brought it forward. It's a good solution to a long-term problem, and it's an appropriate use of the land in this area.
Thank you. Is anyone, Commissioner Quinn?
Um, if anybody's ready, I'd like to make the motion.
Okay.
Thank you. Regarding item number 44, SUP 59938, I make the motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
The motion is to approve item 44. Please vote.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Hang on, hang on. We've still got another vote.
Thank you. Regarding SDR 59939, I make the motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Motion is to approve item 45. Please vote. Motion also carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 44 and 45 will be heard at the city council meeting on September 16th, 2015.
Again, I wanna thank everyone for their participation. This was a lively, debated issue, and, uh, thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, moving on to item 46. Ladies and gentlemen, if you can hold it down, we've still got business, please. Maybe you could take it outside. Item 46 is SUP 59925. The applicant is La Casita De Dona Machi. The owner is ENS Center 2 LLC for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed beer wine cooler on sale establishment use within an existing 1,310 square-foot restaurant with a waiver to allow a 312-foot distance separation from a city park where 400 feet is required at 2407 Southeastern Avenue in Ward 3. Councilman Coffin, staff recommends denial. Can we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed use does not meet the standards of the Unified Development Code as the applicant has requested a waiver to allow a 312-foot distance separation from a city park where a 400-foot separation is required. Staff has no basis to support the requested distance separation waiver and recommends denial of this request. Staff notes that additional letters of protest were received after the preparation of the agenda package.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Mr. Chair, members of the council, or commission, I appeared in front of this body in 2002 over the same location, um, requesting the variance of the 310, 312 feet from the park, and it was then granted for that tenant. I'm Anthony Sinclair. I own ENS Center 2. My address is 8225 East Faraway Place, Prescott Valley, Arizona. This is the owner of the restaurant. It's a family restaurant, and I'll let her speak now.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Perla Varila, and I'm at 2407 Southeastern Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89104.
Do you have anything to add to this?
Um, I don't know.
What?
Well, basically, what we want, the special use permit is to be able to sell beer, 'cause we have, it's a Mexican restaurant, and I'm pretty sure, you know, your Mexican food would go very well with like a beer or, um, wine. So that's why we are looking for the special use permit.
If I may, this is a, this is a family-owned business. We have a 7-Eleven in the center. They have an off-sale beer and wine license. This'll be an on-sale, meaning that it all has to be consumed on the premises. It will help the restaurant survive because going in and getting a Mexican meal without a glass of wine or a beer leaves something to be desired. And I would ask that the, uh, commission waive the difference of, what are we talking, 80 feet? 80, 88 feet? And there is a wall around the park. And you've not, as far as I know, you've not had many members of the park come in to eat.
No.
And we have, we have security, um, on, at the building on a, on a daily basis. It's not 24-hour security, but it's, uh, we have a fellow that comes in on a daily basis and helps clean up the mess of, of any homeless that do come in and hang around. So I would ask that the commission waive the distance as you did in 2002 and grant the liquor license.
Thank you very much. I will open this for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and see if there's any discussion amongst the planning commissioners. Vice Chair?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Chairman, a question through you for the applicant, did you say you have a, currently have an off-sale license?
There's a 7, we have a 7-Eleven in the center, and they have an off-sale license.
And just looking at the pictures, um, I'm sure you don't have permits or all of those signs all, all around your building. Is that, is that true?
Um, those signs have been removed. I met with the code enforcement officer today, and it was on a recheck. There are a few signs that need to be removed, and they are in the process of being removed.
Okay. And you know our current sign code?
Yeah.
Um, and staff, correct me if I'm wrong, it's maximum 20% of the windows? And staff has shaken their head, yes. And you have about 100%? So, um, is there a condition, if approved, that addresses this? Through you, Mr. Chairman, for either Tom Perrigo or for Mr. Rankin or Peter?
Staff?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, through you, I, I believe, uh, the issue with the signage is at the other uses within the center, correct? Are, not for the, or is it for the, the restaurant itself? Uh, for the...
It's for the restaurant itself.
Restaurant itself, yeah. I, I, there's a condition that requires them to conform with all city code, and I, I believe there has been, uh, uh, an issue addressed with code enforcement, and they are working on, through that issue. So, um, I, another condition of approval could be added that would require, uh, conformance with Title 19 regarding the sign code.
Okay. I met with John Aigan today.
Excuse me?
I met with the code enforcement officer today.
Okay.
And we have everything under control. And we have seven days to have him...
Let me, let me just state where I'm coming from on this. We, we see this all the time, and it's starting to get pretty, pretty annoying in my neighborhood when people go out and put illegal signs up on their properties, and then they come in and they ask us for special use permits, and then we approve these, and then a month later, they go back and they put the legal signs up. And so, um, although I don't have a issue with the 312 feet from a city park since it's just on sale and not off sale, um, I just really wanna reinforce, you know, our sign code, um, because that part of Eastern is starting to look pretty trashy, and it's been looking trashy for the past six years, and it doesn't seem like we can do anything about it. So, um, I would like to add an additional condition to just verify that that is specifically put in there. That way they can't come back in the future and state, "Oh, well, we didn't read all of Title 19." It specifically says something to the effect of, of signs, so they specifically know what they didn't do. Bye.
So, Vice Chair, are you asking for an administrative review to come back to look at a condition on the sign?
No, I'm not necessarily looking at an administrative review because I'll drive by the site and I'll go ahead and call staff, myself, if I see something, as I have on many of the other projects that I've approved.
Okay.
So, so perhaps that condition would be, "All signings shall be maintained in conformance with Title 19," as a condition of approval? And then if, should they not do that, then it would be a violation of both zoning code and the condition of the special use permit?
Okay.
All right. I wanna make sure both of you understand that condition and that you're agreeing to it before we make a vote on this.
Yes.
Okay. So ma'am, you understand what it is about the signage? You, as we look at these pictures, you have too many signs in your windows. You can only have 20% of your windows covered by signs, and, and you'll fix that.
Yeah.
And that location has in fact been corrected. It's two other tenants in the building that has not.
Okay. So when you said code enforcement, you spoke with code enforcement today, it was not regarding this, this address?
Oh, I was, I met with him onsite regarding the entire building.
Okay.
Because this is not the only tenant that was in violation. And we met with the individual tenants, the three of us, and, um, the building has a week to get into conformance per his.
Okay. Thank you. I think we're, no, Commissioner Trowbridge.
Yes, thank you. My question relates to the alcohol. Who, you, do you operate the restaurant now, and have your, your family operated it since the last eight years or whatever it's been, or there was...
We took ownership about a year ago.
In the period that you have been owners, have you had any problems with alcohol sales?
No.
With, thank you. And another comment while I've got the mic going. The situation with the signage at that particular center is a common element of having an absentee landlord. And, um, you might need to, to pay a little more attention to the signage on your, when you go to pick up the rents, take a look, because signs are like, uh, broken windows. If you let one go, you're gonna have another, and another, and another, and all of a sudden you have competing signs going on. For her restaurant to get any recognition, they've gotta have more and bigger and bolder and brighter signs than the people next door, where it just all gets lost. And that's, just a...
I've been doing this for 50 years, sir, and I understand.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Carrer.
Thank you. Um, if this is approved, can we, way to put a condition and have this come back for review, not only for the signs, but for how it's going with the beer and wine sales? I can understand if I owned a restaurant, I would want to have at least beer and wine as well. All the Mexican food I eat, I like to have beer and wine along with that as well. Uh, and, uh, so I, I, I don't have an issue with this, but I still would like to know that after a year or so, it hasn't gotten out of hand, and we can always pull that special use permit if it's not being properly managed. Is that possible?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Vice Chair?
Commissioner, because it's a special use permit, you can call it back at any time. If there's a problem, if we have a number of code enforcement calls, number of calls for service, the city council can pull that forward at any time.
But that would have to be activated, but it would have to be activated by...
By, by either calls for service or problems or issues. And in order to take away a special use permit since it is a property right, it does take quite a bit to, you know, number of calls for service or problems or, you know, selling to minors or, you know, just a series of missteps by the applicant would be required. So, but staff normally checks on these on a regular basis.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Commissioner Carrer, I wanna, are, are you asking for an administrative review in one year?
Well, council has sort of somewhat given direction that it's, I guess we could, but it would still be mandated by issues that have been put in over the year. And then if, if it does get out of hand, then it would be pulled anyways.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if we need to. I would like to, but I'm not sure if it's necessary.
You, you can. I mean, you could, if you'd like to do like administrative review after one year, staff can take a look at it, make sure they're compliant with conditions, and let you know if there's any issues or problems. It wouldn't come back to you, but it'd just be administrative with, with the staff.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, just a comment for Commissioner Carrer. Uh, there's two ways to do it. You could do a, a public hearing where it comes back to this body, or the easier way is just administrative review. And then staff goes and checks on it, and it's cheaper for the applicant. And if they find it in compliance, then basically it, it pretty much goes away. And if they find issues, then they'll recommend it back to this body.
Thank you. I trust your recommendation.
So...
Mr. Chairman, if that's the case, I, I have some proposed language for that. Being an administrative required review shall be conducted within one year from the date of license issuance.
Okay. The applicant agreed to that condition?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I think we're ready for a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on item 46, SUP 59925, I'd move to approve, subject to staff's conditions, um, with the added condition written to the record by Peter of Administrative Review within one year from the issuance of the liquor license and, uh, the added condition as written to the record by Doug Rankin, that all signage shall comply with Title 19. And is that good enough?
I think that's good enough.
All right.
So the motion is to approve item 46, subject to the two additional conditions. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item will be heard at the city council meeting on September 16th, 2015.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our final item tonight is item 47, SDR 59930. The applicant is Hamad Panahi. The owner is 4631 WSM LLC for possible action on a request for a major amendment to aesthetic review to redesign the parking lot with a waiver to allow a zero-foot-wide landscape buffer along the east property line where five feet was previously required at 3,900 North Rancho Drive in Ward 5. Staff recommends denial. Can we please have the staff report?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, previously, uh, this, this site was seen by the planning commission regarding a special use permit and, oh, a review condition for the increased number of rental cars. As part of that review, uh, the, the site was found not to be in conformance with the original approved, uh, site plan that was approved in 1998. Staff finds that the substandard landscaping proposed by the applicant is not compatible with the pattern of development occurring along the portion of Rancho Drive, nor is it in conformance with the original approval. In particular, staff notes that the extensive landscaping provided on an northwest primary care clinic operated by the Veterans Administration, which is immediately to the north of the site, was constructed in 2011. For, for the purposes of discussion, well, uh, and as such, staff is unable to support the, the waivers requested regarding the landscaping, and is recommending denial.
Thank you very much. Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Hamid Panahi. I am at 1393 Manor Wood Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89135. I'm here to ask for your approval of a proposed waiver and the improvement that the owner is willing to make to the site to... is willing to make to the site to comply with the nonconformance issues. There's... Number one is, is the parking issue that the owner was cited on, and the proposal is to clean up the site and restripes the site. Doing such will provide additional parking, three additional parking, bringing the total parking to 80. Currently, it's 77. It's hard to see what, where the stripes are. The condition of the site is pretty bad. As far as the landscape buffer goes, as was stated, there was never the previous owner... This owner, I have to say that this was... They took over this property in 2012. And the variance, previous variance was in 98, as was stated. And unfortunately, the previous owner did not ever put in place that five-foot buffer zone in the back adjacent to the alley. Given the, all the surrounding areas are industrial, with the exception of Veterans Affairs, the alley in the back is non-residential. We don't have any residential around this property really. We want to ask you to please approve the waiver of its standard by condition that we provide the six 24-inch box trees that were supposed to go in the back landscape area be placed on the side, to the south side of the property, adding more landscape. And also because of the fact that if we add five-foot landscape area, it will reduce the number of parking that this site have and effectively rendering it non-rentable. 19 parking, we're proposing in that along the alley back there. If we take five feet because of this space limitation, you're losing that 19 parking lot in there. So I'd like to ask you to please approve the waiver of standards.
Thank you very much. I'll open this for public comment as anyone wishes to be heard on this item. Doesn't look like it, so I'll close the public comment and we can discuss this as a planning commission, beginning with Commissioner Carrer down east.
Thank you, though. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can staff clarify for me exactly what is being asked?
The request is to amend the original site plan. The original site plan indicated that there was a landscape buffer along the east property line.
Which never happened, right?
Which was not installed by, when the project was built originally. It was, it was supposed to be installed and it was not. So, at the previous item, there was a review of condition at a previous planning commission that's being considered at council as we speak to increase the number of rental cars at this site for the enterprise rental car at this location. And upon review of that application, it was noted the deficiency of the landscaping on the east property line.
So, we are approving, are not approving the amendment to not put those landscaping buffers in? We aren't doing the cars? That's at city council?
Correct. The review of condition already occurred at planning commission, the recommendation had moved forward, and that's at city council.
Okay, so specifically, we are... He wants an amendment to not approve, to not put in that landscaping?
Correct, correct. So if this item was approved, the site as it currently exists would remain as it is with some of the restriping that the applicant mentioned. If it was denied, then the landscape buffer along the east property line would be required.
Okay, so sir, wouldn't it be easier just to put the landscaping in than to comply with the original aesthetic review, aesthetics of the property?
The only issue, the only issue is that if you look at the drawings, really there isn't room to add another five feet of landscaping. If you do that, then the configuration of all those parking stalls need to change. So you lose 19 stalls by adding a five-foot strip of landscaping.
So this is one of those issues of, "We'll just do it and then pray for forgiveness later. We'll just do what we want to do no matter what has been requested of you to do and it's not being done. You went another route and now you're saying, 'Hey, I didn't, that didn't happen.'" So, you know what? Why don't you just let me slide and let me?
With all due respect?
Not do this.
With all due respect? No, that is not the condition.
Okay, so help me understand it then.
The owner took over this property?
Right.
In 2012.
Right.
Waiver condition was approved in 98, 1998. Whoever didn't enforce that and gave him a certificate of occupancy, is it fair to blame it on this owner?
Well, I mean, you know, your house has got leaks. Can't blame it on the owner, you know? Before, you got to fix the leaks. You know what I mean? You take on that responsibility.
Exactly.
And the responsibility has said that this is what's supposed to happen. And I, I, and I'm not trying to, I mean, it's late and I'm not trying to be, you know, drive this nail in a coffin, but I think that it's, it's... And to not to come with an alternate plan, right? So you come with one plan, approve this the way it is or not, instead of coming and say, "Hey, this didn't happen, but this is what I would like to do to try to rectify the issue that happened."
Adding, adding six trees that would fit within that buffer zone?
Right.
If we had a buffer zone in there, six trees would fit in there. We're taking that six trees and adding it on the west side, the south side, I'm sorry, on the south side of the landscaping.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't see where that's... I think I would need, because the only picture that I have is a picture that, of the enterprise rental car, which you see.
Yeah, there are.
So I'm trying to... Where's the landscaping? So the picture that's up?
Yeah, the one that is up. There are clearly indicated on the south side of the property. Do you see the plan?
I do. Do you have it in front of you or you don't have a?
I have it in front of me, yeah. There are three trees that are shown by arrows that are going to be added. On the, on the far east and then in the north, on the west, west side are also three additional So the rear parking gets three trees and the front parking gets three.
Okay. And that would be your buffer?
That's the, that's the solution to what, the landscaping that we're missing basically in the back.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Unfortunately, I can't support your application tonight. When the owner purchased this property, the owner purchased the property with the condition that was previously imposed on it. So, you know, we need that landscape buffer on the east property line. And in my opinion, an applicant should come in here saying, "We're willing to fix this because we're looking for additional benefits down the road." We're not making decisions about what's going to happen with the waiver of conditions about the rental vehicles and more than five passenger automobiles. But I consider this self-imposed, even though it wasn't self-imposed, but it was imposed by the previous owner who agreed to this. So unfortunately, I can't, I can't support your request tonight.
Even though we lose parking?
We're just, we've closed... I didn't have any questions for you. Anyone else?
No.
Okay, ready for a motion?
No, not yet. Because I do want to see what staff says about that. Will they be losing parking, which would then generate a parking variance? Or if they build them out the way it was supposed to, would they still have the required parking spaces?
Well, the issue is the original site plan that was approved back in 1998, the dimensions were incorrect. And they're actually, weren't able to, you know, it showed the five-foot landscape buffer along that area, but the dimensions to the site plan were not accurate, that were provided to the planning commission and city council at the time. As configured currently, if they do provide the five-foot landscape buffer, there will be some parking that will have to be removed. I'm not sure how we would treat that off the top of my head here, whether the site is then parking impaired because it was built and approved as such, or would it then necessitate a variance? We'd have to look at a revised plan in order to do that. Mr. Lowenstein, matter of fact, is counting parking spaces as we speak for the required parking as part of that. So there could be other issues arise if the landscape buffer along the east property is required because there is some additional parking that has been provided back there that wasn't even shown on the original plan. There's been additional parking spaces added from the original plan. But as I said, the original site plan was not, it had wrong measurements on it. They were, they were not accurate.
So through the chair, another question for Mr. Rankin. If we put in that five-foot landscape buffer all the way across the alley, does that mean that every one of the parking spaces along the alley is pretty much going away?
A portion of them would. There's a minimum requirement for the drive aisles. Possibly you could change that two-way drive aisle to a one-way drive aisle and accommodate the parking spaces at maybe as an angled parking with the one-way drive. But once again, pen must go to paper to ensure that. I don't know if Mr. Lowenstein's quick analysis of that, if he has any comments.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Just eyeballing it, without the 19 spaces, I'm counting about 60 onsite. I mean, you can tell me if I'm counting that wrong. But so you, even with the elimination of the 19, you'd still be in excess of the required parking pursuant to the Title 19, or actually from the original Z 15963 case?
Yeah, 80, we're proposing 80, so 19 have taken out and we end up with 61.
Commissioner Carrer?
Thank you. Staff, would it be prudent to have abate this for 30 days and then have general work with you to get an exact... Because it seems, at least my will is to comply with what is supposed to, the original review, I mean, the original...
Through you, Mr. Chairman. If they do comply with the original plan as approved, that, this item is not needed any longer and that would be done administratively through a, just an update to the, to the plan itself and a permit for the revision for the landscaping.
And if it is denied, then they would be required to go back to?
That's correct. If it was denied, they would have to comply with that original site plan that was approved back in 98.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I think we're ready for a vote.
We have to ask the chair about public comment. I'm not sure.
Can I just make one little comment? I'm sorry.
So you want me to reopen the public hearing?
I apologize.
All right. I'm going to hold you to your, your assurance is going to be quick.
Yes, I, I'm the manager.
You need to turn on your microphone, please.
Walter Thomas?
I work at Thomas Auto.
Address, please.
3700 North Rancho. I work at the automotive repair shop just down the street from him. And if you would look at the photographs of the back lot, none of the other businesses back there have a five-foot, foot planter along that alleyway. It would be a major eyesore, basically. I mean, I know you're going to have planners there, but it's, it's just out of, out of congruence with everything else that's back there. It's an alleyway. It's not a thoroughfare.
I've never heard anyone say that putting landscaping was going to be an eyesore.
Well, an inconvenience for everybody that drives through there. The rental car, you know, they go in and out of there all the time. It's, I apologize for my...
No, no, no problem. I'm glad, I'm glad you got to speak.
Yeah, the businesses that are there don't have any landscaping along that area anyway.
They need it, though. In my opinion, they need it. It should be there. It beautifies it. It cools the asphalt.
Sure.
It creates heat. And we need landscaping when we ask for it.
Motorcycle shop that's right there is their property line, their building is right against that, that area, that the buffer zone.
I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Carrer.
I think we should abate this for at least 30 days and have them work with staff to go out and take a look at this and figure out what's the best route. Now, if they do comply, then they won't come back. But I think that you should work with the staff to figure this out before you come back to us and it gets denied. Maybe there's a, something that can happen.
So, can you?
Mr. Chairman?
Hang on, hang on.
May I speak real quick?
Yes.
I have to agree with Mr. Thomas. I've looked at this picture here. I did a quick count. I may be wrong. There's a requirement to have 73 spaces. There's 80 provided right now. If we lose 20 spaces, it takes it down to 60. We're going to turn it into a parking impaired area, number one. Number two, that's an alley back there. There's nothing that any of the public is seeing. And if you look at the picture, everybody's got the same thing up and down the line. So I would ask everybody, I would support this as it is.
So you want to vote instead of obey?
Beg your pardon, I don't want to obey it. I think we need to vote.
Commissioner Slough?
Mr. Chairman, I would agree. I mean, everything's built to the line. Usually, I would never agree with somebody not putting in landscaping or not doing what they're supposed to or taking landscaping out. I think we should hold their feet to the fire, but considering this alley is built out all the way to the property line and, I mean, there's trash receptacles and everything else back there, I don't think it's necessarily going to help the, this particular alley. And we're just going to be going down a path of then a parking impaired site where he's going to be coming back next month for a variance. And this will be the third month in a row where it's going to be the same thing over and over, so.
So Commissioner Carrer, I'm going to defer to you. It sounds like at least two of the commissioners would like to see this go for an up or down vote tonight.
Well, I tell you, I will entertain a motion then.
Well, you're welcome. I'm going to let you make the motion. If you want to make the motion to obey?
Okay.
You're welcome to do that. If you want to make an up and down vote, that's fine, too.
I will make a motion to obey this for 30 days and work with staff.
Okay. Motion is to obey for 30 days. Before we vote, are you okay with an abeyance of 30 days so that you could work with staff and then come back on this?
I accept anything, but I really invite you guys to visit the site. Then you realize what, what we're dealing with.
Okay.
Please.
Thank you very much. Okay, motion is to obey. Please vote. Okay, we'll vote without her. Okay, so the motion to obey is denied. So I'll now consider a motion for an up or down vote on this. Commissioner Carrer, do you want to make that motion?
Well...
City Attorney?
Okay, that's fine.
Commissioner Carrer?
Well, then I will make a motion to deny S D R 59930.
Okay, so the motion is for denial. A yea vote would deny item 47. Please vote.
Sorry, the motion?
The motion is to deny item 47. It is a tie vote, so that moves forward, I believe, without a recommendation from the planning commission. the planning commission to city council, is that correct, Director?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that item will be heard at the city council meeting on September 16th, 2015.
Ties win.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, thanks for your patience tonight. We are now moving to the citizens' participation portion of the agenda. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission, no subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Does anyone wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, see if any of the planning commissioners wish to be heard. Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.